And Chris, yeah. Do we have, um, Jason may be hidden, but I don't see him. Do you see him?
I'm here trying to get my thing plugged in. You're right there.
All right. Counsel, this is City Council Special Meeting, 6:30 PM, Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. A call to order. Mr. Sugg, will you do roll call?
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malchow.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
And Councilmember Kent Train.
Present.
Good to see everybody. Meeting accessibility. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the meeting to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. To view live, city website www.samamish.us/tv21. City Facebook, www.facebook.com/cityofsamamishwa. Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. To view later. Meeting videos are available the day after the meeting on the city website, again at www.samamish.us/tv21, and on YouTube and on Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. Next we have the pledge. And how about, well, how about Mr. Sugg?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Okay, next up is the approval of the agenda. I'm looking for a motion for approval.
Hello?
Seconded.
Okay, I have an approval and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'm gonna, I don't, um, I don't see everybody. So, all in favor, actually, let's go the other way. Anybody who disagrees, say nay. Okay, that would be a seven oh vote in favor of.
Next up is public comment.
Pursuant to the Governor Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Written comment. Written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@samamish.us and the citycouncil@samamish.us. Verbal comment. Up to three minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted by 6:30 PM the day of the meeting. The phone number, 1-571-317-3122. The access code, 929-348-197. Once you have joined, you will be placed on mute. The meeting operation will, the meeting operator, I'm sorry, will unmute you when it is your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say "unmuted" when that occurs. The operator will ask you to begin your comment. Mr. Sugg?
Thank you, Mayor. I see we have two people who have called in to provide public comment this evening. As the mayor mentioned, I will unmute callers in the order in which they join the meeting. When it is your turn, you will hear an automated voice say "unmuted," and then you will have three minutes to provide comment. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city you live in for the record. And I will now go ahead and unmute our first caller. All right, first caller, you have three minutes.
I am Ramiro Valderrama, Ramayo, City of Samamish. The Washington Open Public Meetings Act, codified in the RCW, requires all meetings of government bodies and publications, including cities, to be open to the public. The OPMA contains specific upper provisions regarding the regular and special meetings and executive session. A meeting under OPMA occurs when a quorum of city council members gathers with a collective intent of transacting the government governing bodies' business. In order to be valid, all of these must be adopted and meetings conducted in compliance with the OPMA. Note that meetings do not have to be in person to be subject to the OPMA. Meetings can occur by telephone, email, or other electronic media. That is from the RCW. Today I saw that last night another executive session was added again before the public hearing. I wanted to alert the council that this gives the appearance to the general public that you are using executive sessions for deliberations that should be done openly in public hearings. This perception of the citizens is compounded by the fact that council numbers, quote, "called" the question, unquote, "to stop deliberations before a discussion amongst council numbers occurs." This weaponization of a tool in Robert's Rules was not meant to stop all deliberations, but to cut off after a reasonable length of time, not to avoid it entirely, but those were in quotes. If you see the July, uh, 2020 Jurassic Parliament article I attached for you, you will recognize this Samamish council being called out for violating the intended use of the rule, and Ann McFarland, a recognized parliamentarian procedures expert, reminding councils that dissenting voices should have their opportunity to speak. The use of "call" the question requires a two-thirds majority of the council to support the motion, and begs the question, how the majority can agree, they have heard enough, before any deliberation starts unless a quorum had previously met to discuss the actions in question in violation of the state open pleadings MAC, uh, Meetings Act stated above. Likewise, the use of point of orders has been weaponized, to use Ms. McFarland's words, by this council, to cut off discussions unnecessarily when the council numbers in the majority field of position deliberate, uh, debilitated by showing past presence. If the information is relative and germane to the topic under discussion, it should be allowed under Robert's Rules. In order to avoid further appearance of dysfunctionality and repeated appearance of lack of transparency and violations, I would recommend the council to bring Ms. McFarland back for a workshop on the proper use and not abuse of Robert's Rules in cycling legitimate discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, lucky for the council I get to see Ms. McFarland this week, so I'll have to make sure she had all the points up to that. Uh, next?
Yes, we have one more caller. I will go ahead and unmute them now. Caller number two, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Coons, and I am the Executive Director of Estes Health and Research Foundation and Project Vise. And, uh, the council and most of, many of people on the staff have been hearing from me much of this day. Um, and I've also been in communication with much of the public and surrounding cities and this around, uh, because of the types of procedures that have been used in tonight's, um, special meeting. Now, three nonprofits have been, um, proposed as a revise on this, a revision on this agenda to receive nonprofit funding tonight for COVID-19. As many of you know, I have been coming into the city council, uh, meeting by virtual to propose a grant proposal for $10,000 to $30,000 for somewhere around the rest of this year to help people with emergency nutrition kits for, uh, the COVID-19 pandemic. And I have been around and around and around in emails and discussions, and now directed by, uh, members of the city council, and very little information from the rest of the staff to guide a, uh, nonprofit grant proposal. And I've been given this information, and this information has been sent out on Facebook to other, like, community members, and this is unethical. And I've already brought up on a number of occasions, in different times, where there have been many different unethical situations that have occurred here. I've also brought up proposals, one after the other, in regard to human services, and public health manager, and now nonprofit funding, and I have done due diligence to do this in the right, correct way, and to provide every information that you need. And the last that I've heard about this grant proposal is that, uh, new nonprofits or new 501Ps cannot receive funding, or some other excuse that's always on top of another excuse, 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 on top of another excuse. You get my message? So, I'm really fed up, and I think everybody in this community gets fed up with this particular city council at this point, for one, apparently not following procedures on a number of occasions, and intentionally trying to misalign and give misinformation and not helping people who are actually trying to do good for our community. And this is enough. And right now, we have people in poverty who need help during the COVID-19 crisis, and we should not be discriminating against people who are trying to help people in this community. And I have asked tonight for someone on the city council to put my grant proposal on the agenda for consideration for approval along with the three other nonprofits. And I expect it to be done, and I've asked for it to be done, I've done it nicely, and now I'm really done. This did gotta be done tonight, or it's gonna land into a formal complaint. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other calls?
That is all the callers that we've received tonight.
Okay. Okay, next up we have executive session. Um, let's see. It, pardon? Okay, um, so I have executive session, um, potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I. Lisa, are you on?
Yes, I am.
And did you want her to?
Please, anything germane to advising the council going into an executive session, or should we just adjourn the executive session?
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to, to make a brief remark, uh, regarding executive sessions. The city council is authorized to go into a closed session to discuss matters pending potential litigation, real estate matters, and several others. We will not take any action in an executive session. Discussion only will occur, and we'll come back out into regular session, announce no action to be taken, uh, and the mayor will provide a sub, um, adjustment of how much time will be in executive session.
Thank you.
How much time do you think we need? Okay, so, uh, let's see. Looks like it is about quarter two, so, um, I am going to estimate that we will be back here at five minutes after sound. Counsel, I'm reminding you that you will need to check out of this thing and then link back into your executive session. See you on the other side. Okay, next up is our consent calendar. Um, I'm looking for a motion for, um, for acceptance of the consent calendar.
Hello?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, I just was curious because the link seemed to disappear before I could click on it. Is there any way to get the details through the consent calendar? The first packet that came out, I thought it had a link, but I didn't click on it, and when the revised one came out, I didn't see it on anymore.
Oh, hang on. Okay, I'm gonna disappear for a minute, let me see what my does say.
There we go.
Yeah, her, she said her link is not, um...
Not there.
Oh, for the, okay, the payroll link?
Well, that's the only thing I can set now, right?
And on the minutes.
No, I mean, yeah.
Yep.
Kristi, you're freaking out not because you appear on two different places on the screen. Well, but the other one's Todd, because I've got the audio.
So I second the motion to approve the consent agenda calendar.
Okay, so, um...
I'm not arguing against it, I just couldn't get to the...
Yeah, so, I see what you're saying is there's not a, uh, there's not a link to it for the payroll period of. I'm trying to see if it's listed out separately in here, and it's not.
I'll wait till next week. I don't, I don't wanna delay payroll, but I'd rather be able to review something for a moment.
Uh, the city clerk's here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, there is no link for the claim, it's just, for the, um, payroll, it's just only the claim, like, the payroll...
Oh, no, I'm making... Okay. Was there a link there before, or did I just imagine that?
There was no link.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm thinking, was there a, okay. So, we have a first and a second. Um, and again, I'm going to look for, for, this is going to be for those who vote no. For those who oppose, say nay.
Oppose.
Kristi? Okay, great. Okay, so it's, it passes seven zero. And then we're onto new business. And the first thing up is our discretion, uh, discussion of our traffic model. Um, okay, well, I see, okay, Mr. Sugg, do you want to introduce us?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Counsel, and Mr. City Manager. My name is Mike Sugg. I'm the Senior Management Analyst here at the city. Uh, we are also joined tonight by a few consultants that have been involved in the Traffic Model Audit Project. Uh, on the go-to meeting tonight, we have Victor Solomon and Andrew Breton of Transportation Solutions. We have Robert Scholl of Eco Resource Management Systems, and we have Josh Anderson of David Evans and Associates. So as you'll recall, the city contracted with TSI Transportation Solutions earlier this year to perform an audit of all of the inputs and assumptions that have gone into the three traffic models used by the city. They completed their work in early May, but due to the COVID-19 restrictions, were unable to present the results during a council meeting. Therefore, TSI held small group, small group briefings with council members to discuss their findings and answer any questions. Since we are now able to discuss topics, uh, to discuss this topic during an open meeting, we've invited Robert Scholl, who has provided a peer review of TSI's work, as well as Josh Anderson, who you all know as the city's traffic modeling and concurrency testing consultant. Included in your packet is the audit report from TSI, as well as the response memo from DEA. And the format of the presentation tonight is nearly identical to the one that the council received in small groups earlier this year. The main change is that we've added DEA's responses. So, TSI will speak to their findings, uh, and then DEA will be able to convey their response, at which point the council may ask questions of all the consultants present. With that said, Victor is going to share his screen and start us off with the presentation. Oh, and the mayor has a quick question.
Would they, would you rather that we hold questions until the end, or along the way?
So, the way the presentation is structured is that we kind of go through the recommendations one by one. So I feel like, uh, since we're kind of taking that one by one approach, it may make sense to ask questions on the slides themselves.
All righty.
And we can move on to the next recommendation.
Okay.
All right, Victor.
Okay, good evening, counsel. So, uh, we'll just start through. Like I said, it's fine to ask questions as we go through. I won't be able to remember the answers as we go that far. Now it is up to you how to advance the slide. There we go. So, essentially, we found mostly minor corrections, um, that we believe can be applied to the travel demand forecasting model, uh, and the intersection operations of models that are really intended to improve their reliability, both now and in the future, primarily for making decisions. Uh, the travel demand model's been around for quite a while. It's been handled by, uh, several, several consultants, several engineers and planners. Um, it's been incrementally updated, but it, uh, it still has a lot of its history of how models, or how it was built in 1999, and how that particular modeler chose to do things. One of the things we concluded is that, um, the travel demand model outputs really should be checked, um, on a very, um, broad level, um, not, not just relying on a, on a calibration, but also challenging results of the, um, odd, um, unreasonable, unintuitive. Uh, we, we see that, uh, you know, fairly often in transportation engineering, it's not as easy to model people as it is to model water, like a water sewer network or drainage network. And so, uh, when things start to look odd, uh, we like to investigate it, um, and try to discover why the model's behaving that way. Uh, one of the things we noticed on the intersection models is that there are some default values that were used, in some cases used consistently and some inconsistently in others, uh, but do have, uh, an effect on the output of those models and the level of service. And so we noted some, uh, improvements we believe that could be made there. So we broke our findings into high priority, medium priority, and low priority. We're gonna probably have time to get through the high and medium tonight, and the low priority are, are not nearly as, um, important to discuss. They're more, um, modeling, uh, conveniences and enhancements, um, but not really things that would affect the output. So, high priority finding number one, where, uh, the turn capacity is coded at two specific locations, uh, SR 202 and Sahaliway at the northern end of the city, um, and it is outside the city limit. Uh, it's important that when talking about the city's travel demand model, the network outside the city is, in many cases, just as important or more important than the network that's being modeled inside the city, because it determines how traffic is gonna get in and out of Samamish. So, uh, there are lots of, um, lots of network that's, uh, not in the city, not subject to review, but it needs to be, uh, coded correctly and modeled in order to have the, the information we need for in-city decisions. Um, the other intersection at the southern end of the city, right near the southern city limit, East Lake-Samamish Parkway and 43rd, uh, these particular intersections had, uh, right turn lane capacities that in our opinion were too low, and while the model does calibrate with those capacities, we believe they influence, um, maybe unduly, uh, future forecasts, is that they're constraining two key movements, um, and the model will tend to avoid those, especially as we add more volume, more trip generation into the model. Um, we believe that that, um, is something that should be looked at, uh, in terms of sensitivity and how it changes model results. In particular, both of them really influence from both the north and the south, how much traffic would choose to use Sahaliway 228 and southeast 43rd versus using East Lake-Samamish Parkway or other side streets that that traffic might divert from. And then I'll let Josh cover DEA's response.
Thanks, Victor. So, uh, big picture, we agree, any erroneous coding constraints absolutely can have an impact in the, in the model viability, validity. Uh, in this case, uh, there are, it's pretty standard practice to apply, uh, consistent left through and right, uh, turn capacities when you're building a model. When we're building a model of this size, it's not necessarily realistic to go into every single turn movement within the model and calibrate it exactly for, uh, field conditions. It's a, it's a large model, it's not intended to look at individual turn movements, it's lo, it's intended to look at a, a broader picture of the transportation network. So, in this case, there absolutely is refinement that can be done, and if the council wishes that we go down that road, we absolutely can. Um, it's not necessarily a standard practice to get to that level of detail, uh, for every travel demand model, though.
Any questions? And I would agree with Josh, you know, it is, it is not standard practice to look at every single right turn lane in the network. Um, actually, it was Bob Scholl's, uh, overview of the whole model that helped us discover these two particular cases, because what we noticed, uh, Bob did a plot essentially of looking at all the delays at all the intersections, um, essentially looking for consistency. And what we found very quickly is that these two particular lanes had much higher delays than any other right turn lanes. They, they really were acting as a bottleneck. Um, and, um, Joshua is correct, is that if we change that capacity, we do need to look at the calibration of the model. Um, it would be recalibrating that 2016 model, um, to see if it's still predicting 2016 volumes directly with these right turn capacities changed. But, uh, the reason we found these, again, looking for anomalies in the model, trying to understand why does it sometimes, uh, at least behave the way we wouldn't expect it to? And so we saw these extremely high delays that would explain why the model was assigning more traffic to East Lake-Samamish Parkway than Sahaliway, or more traffic to, uh, 212 Snake Hill Road as opposed to keeping it on 43rd. So, if, does anyone have any questions about this issue? No? Okay. So, this has to do with the intersection model, primarily, the software is called Synchro. It's implementing a highway passing manual methodology for signalized intersection level of service. Again, one of the, um, comments we've heard, um, pretty consistently is that the Synchro model doesn't seem to be predicting the level of service people are experiencing, and that's often true. Most, most drivers, you know, have a hard time of judging the difference between 60 seconds of delay and 80 seconds of average delay. Uh, you know, they're generally all bad, and the difference between 80 and 85 is kind of hard to determine. Um, but one of the things we wanted to look at is, is there a, a potentially, is, is any assumption in that model that might, um, explain why it is overpredicting the level of service or underpredicting the delay? Uh, so we did, uh, some spot checks of what we call the saturation flow rate, so that's the maximum number of vehicles per hour for green per lane. That's a long, uh, long acronym, but it, um, it's, it's a measure of driver behavior, and what we found was that the default model assumption was 1,900 vehicles per hour per lane, um, and what we measured was closer to 1,700 of vehicles per hour per lane. We have noticed this kind of, um, behavior happening actually region-wise, uh, several studies that we've done, uh, it appears that drivers are not focusing on the light turning from red to green, they're looking at other devices in their car, concentrating on other things. And so a lot of intersections are not as efficient as they used to be, uh, because of driver behavior, uh, as much as because of volume and traffic signal timing. So there's, there's a behavioral aspect here. WashDOT has some guidelines, um, they were, um, adopted after the development of the Synchro model and the, um, and it had an approved concurrency certificate, but it wasn't actually built in generating traffic. And so it was put into the model as if it were built. Um, and then the model has a, um, a calibration function that, that looks at the trip table and attempts to balance it to the count, so what the, so the travel demand, uh, travel demand model observed was that there was not enough traffic actually at the intersection of 4th and 228, and to align with the, the land use it saw right next to it. And so it's, it's made an adjustment, uh, so that's, that's how the model was able to be calibrated, um, but it's a big adjustment. There are a lot of trips, um, over 400 that are, um, subtracted from the model there. And this is just a, you know, a, a cleanup suggestion, again, it would, would require a recalibration in the sense the model probably wouldn't self-correct, um, that land use coding error if we made this change. But I think it improves, um, sort of the, the perception of reliability of the model if anything else, is when you see a, uh, that big a correction in a model matrix, you wonder why, why is the model correcting itself? At least in this case, we found a very simple answer, is that it appears that, you know, the concurrency certificate was... And this is just a cleanup suggestion. Again, it would require recalibration in the sense the model probably wouldn't self-correct that land use coding error if we made this change. But I think it improves sort of the perception of reliability of the model. If anything else, is when you see that big a correction in a model matrix, you wonder why, why is the model correcting itself? At least in this case, we found a very simple answer, is it appears that the concurrency certificate was assumed to be built instead of under construction.
I'm kind of starting to feel like a broken record here. Yep, right there with you. It is more of a cleanup thing in my mind. The model itself has corrected for the difference in land use between the inputs and what was on the ground. It should be cleaned up. I don't believe that it would have an impact in the final results of the model or the assignments of the model due to the model correcting itself, but absolutely it should be cleaned up.
Okay. Any questions about this one? Okay. Double reduction of shared trips are finding number four. So the consultants for the Sahalistown Center Project, STC Transpo, provided a shared trip internal capture reduction memo, a very sophisticated analysis of what they believe should be applied to the model. We noted that there were vehicle trips being represented going between what they, they essentially combined the traffic analysis zone on the north side of 4th with the one with their zone on the south side, and they made an argument that there will be essentially non-vehicle internal trips between those two zones. But the model kind of made them, or made them vehicle trips. We see almost 70 trips going in between two TAZs across the street from one another. And this is partly a function of the model's trip generation procedures. It has a very advanced trip generation model that actually accounts for those kinds of trips. And we believe that the Transpo's approach, and actually they wrote a memo disagreeing with finding four. We did prepare a response that I submitted yesterday or the day before, I think, arguing that we think that was an overly, they essentially double, in our mind, confirmed that they were double counting this reduction in trips. The model's capable of doing it. You can put just the land use in the model, and for every other project in the city, in general, the land use for the model, the number of residential units, the number of square feet of development was input into the model, and the model was allowed to make that determination of what was internal to the traffic analysis zone, what was going to the zone next door, and what was going external to the city. So it's, we still believe that that was a double counting of internal trips. And I'll let Josh talk about his response.
And so when we saw this one, I'll be honest, it made me very nervous. That was one that we worked really hard on, and we immediately picked up our tools and went back in, and we don't have, at DEA, we didn't have access to the details. We had access to some of the details, the report that Transpo had provided, but we didn't have access to all of the details. So with that said, we went in and instead of just removing those internalization trips between the proposed town center and the existing town center, we ran a sensitivity test where we removed all of the internalized trips. So while Victor's saying that this double counting is not as conservative of an analysis as it should be, what we looked at was an overly, very overly conservative analysis. And we reran both tests 11 and 12, both the town center tests, with that very overly conservative assumption of no internalized trips at all, and reran, and the overall results of either one of the tests did not change. There were not enough trips on the North Forks and Sahali to cause it to fail, and there were no additional intersections that began to fail because of either one of those tests.
Any questions on this issue?
Okay. Yeah, Victor, question?
Okay.
So Victor, would your recommendation then be for HP4 to also then, if you make the corrections, the guy from DEA said, you know, make the corrections on two and three, if we made this correction on four, would you recommend then that we rerun?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, just to rerun, rerun it and, you know, see what the calculations come out?
Yeah, yeah. In general, we're suggesting that we make these high priority corrections and rerun the concurrency test and see where we are at. You know, this one change in terms of being conservative about the internal capture doesn't reflect as we talked about. And it's still seemed to assign enough traffic outside of the city. That's still an interesting, you know, thing that we're noticing. And so we would suggest we make all these subtle changes. This particular change doesn't require recalibration, so this is actually just rerunning the analysis with a newly recalibrated model. And when we talk about recalibration, we're talking about recalibrating to the same 2016 baseline that all these tests were made, just making that capacity change and the land use change, because we don't know for sure what they would do, whereas they're speculating that maybe they don't make a big difference, but they could make some difference.
Yeah, because I see this one as, if you take it, if it's been taken completely out and there's no change, so fine, right? Either take it out or put it in how you think the adjustments should be, and then that leaves us down to HP5, which I'll have, I could maybe have another question for that one, but yeah, it just seems like it's a lot of little changes that make a big difference.
Yeah, could make a difference. We're not implying what difference they make, just we think they ought to be addressed cumulatively, and then let's see what happens when we do all those things.
Yeah, I make a lot of mistakes on the way to the top of the mountain, if I'm climbing Mount Rainier, and I still come home alive, but it could be tragic. So both results, who knows, right? We don't know yet because we haven't run, rerun the model with the changes.
So one of the subtle nuances with this one, we would need the STCA applicant to provide additional information. We need to get into their trip generation worksheets and remove the internal, that one portion of the internalization to fully understand that this HP4 impact.
Yeah. And Josh, is an alternative to just put their, again, input their new residential units and their new non-residential land use and let the model do its own trip generation like it does for the other residential and non-residential uses in the model?
That is an option. I don't think it holds as closely to the newest ITE methodology. So I think it is an option, but I'd need to look at it a little bit more in depth before I could say yes or no to that one.
Yeah, because in general, a travel demand model is not using ITE trip generation the same way you would for a traffic analysis to develop the driveway counts or subdivision access volumes. They are different trip generation rates developed in a different way. And so that's a modeling procedure that we could talk about some more, but yeah, just IT, the IT trip generation rates are not exactly the trip generation rates used in a travel demand model because it's taking care of a lot of the shared and bypass type trips. Okay. Is there something else? Yes.
I have a question.
We've got a lot of feedback. We've got in the queue, we've got Councilmember Stewart and then Councilmember Ritchie.
Yeah, so I think Victor and Josh, you may have already answered my question, but it sounds like we had a overly liberal and an overly conservative calculations, and it sounds like there are two ways we could approach it to get sort of the middle one, which I think is what we're after, right? Sort of the just right, you know, we'll use the Goldilocks method. We want the one that's just right. And so it sounds like there would be more analysis to be done to determine what that just right method would be, but it would be somewhere in between the first running and the last running. Is that, is that an accurate assessment there?
Yeah, I think so. I think we have an overly optimistic estimate of internal capture and trip generation and maybe, maybe a pessimistic one that Josh tested to see what it would do.
Okay. So you guys would, if we did go down the route of, which I think we need to understand how much that would cost, if we did go down that path, there would still, it would cost more because we have to do a little analysis to figure out what that just right approach is? Is that what I'm hearing?
It's more, I think, developing, yeah, developing a consensus. We can't, there's not going to be a formula or a book that says, here's exactly how to do it. It is an engineering and modeler's judgment call, and not just the modeler, but, you know, the modeler and staff and other consultants potentially to say, what is the best thing to do? Like I said, you know, travel demand models are very, they're always challenging because people, you know, they aren't consistent. They don't, you know, they don't respond to things like water and gravity and friction. But everyone does it differently. But yes, that's, that would take, there would need to be a decision made about this, this is that Goldilocks way we're going to analyze and think about internal capture in the town center.
Right. We don't want to be overly optimistic, but at the same time, I don't think it would be realistic that people will be driving across the street either, so we want to make sure we kind of find the right balance there, right?
Right. If it's a walking trip, let's make sure it's a walking trip and not modeled as a car.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie?
So a question for Josh. In your response to HP4, I guess regarding the necessity or the, what we would get from having a reanalyzed test or a revised test within that, to use Councilmember Stewart's terminology, the Goldilocks zone, your report said, or your response to HP4 said, these reanalyzed reports are attached to Appendix A and B, which I'm looking at here in your memorandum, and the results of each test did not change. Both tests passed concurrency standards in place at the time of the test. So I guess I don't understand, if you've already done that work, if you've already taken it out completely or used it, you know, and they both pass, and we put it in the middle, how would you expect a different result?
I personally would not.
Yeah. So for this test, you may not, what it does influence is future tests. So the overly optimistic internal capture means potentially more development still gets a pass before improvements are required. The overly conservative one, you know, restricts the ability to get a pass with future development. So in terms of, you know, big picture, that's why we want that Goldilocks, so we're not overestimating or underestimating the reserve capacity for future growth.
I appreciate that. I get it. Everything you're doing here makes sense to me, and I'm no traffic engineer, though, you know, after all this time, I feel like I've had an interesting introduction to it. I guess just in terms of what we're, yeah, right. I try. All right, I'm leaving. I guess I'm listening. It just seems like we're, if the goal here is to try to figure out whether or not the concurrency model that was run, is there some flaw to it? Like when I say a flaw, I mean like a critical flaw, like a deal breaker. Is there something in HP4, as I read it without DEA's response, and I hear what you're saying, Victor? I mean, it seems like there is an understanding that there's a lot of different ways that we could do this going forward, but am I correct in saying that based upon what's here and what was done, the fact that you guys, or I'm Josh, or whomever, went back in and did it both ways, right? Both extremes, if you will, and both of them passed this current test, or this current application or whatever it was that caused this, this process to start, that a Goldilocks find would not be expected to change anything, yet going forward for other applications, for other concurrency models, we would want to try to find that Goldilocks place in those concurrency applications. Is that true?
So in my, in my opinion, this is one of those ones that I don't think it's going to change the result of the test. If we are going back in to clean up other things, to make other edits, we should make this edit at the same time.
Okay. So, sorry, go ahead, Victor.
And yeah, and you know, essentially establish a procedure for mixed-use development anytime it's put into the model, so you don't have the developer's consultant telling you how to model mixed use. You figure that out and you do it consistently all the time. Yeah, as far as whether, you know, whether the test is valid or not, that really, we were looking at the methodology of how the tests were done and how the models were built. Actually, we believe the turn capacities at the two external intersections probably have more influence on whether the test would pass or not. In some sensitivity testing we looked at, there is a lot of traffic shift to 228 as a result of that right turn, especially in the AM, which could create either current or future segment problems in the AM. So
That's HP1.
That was not a recalibrated test that you did, so I'm not necessarily confident that that result would be the same if the model were recalibrated correctly.
Right. So we're, our opinion is that it probably would, but yes, we need to recalibrate it to demonstrate it. But it's enough of a concern, we believe it would.
So in totality, and again, I apologize for, I just want to make sure I understand this, and I'll stop, because HP4 was the one that I had outlined just from my reading of it, but if I'm, if Victor, if you're correct, are you recommending, from your perspective, that we should take each of these individually, combine them, and then run the concurrency test again for this application going forward? Or slash and, apply these things going forward? So we're making the rules for mixed-use development going forward. We're doing what we can to not be subject to a developer's traffic modeler. We would do that, we would make these changes going forward for other applications. Is it both? Is it one or the other?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a staffing and it's more of a policy call whether you're going to go backwards. Our recommendation is, as you move forward, have the best tool that you can to make future land use decisions, so that you know you're evaluating your transportation network against those future land use proposals with the best information you have. Going backwards is not our intent, but polishing the tool so it works better for future decision making is really what all of our recommendations are about, and they all need to happen together. If you start picking and choosing, like you said, it's more important that we consistently apply the same procedure across all of it.
And
Right on. Thank you.
One other clarification there. Victor said, you know, we don't want the applicants to dictate how we run the model. Absolutely agree, and that isn't how this one went down, I'll be honest with you. The applicant came in with some very different assumptions than we ended up putting into the model. We went back and forth with the applicant for months to try to update and get everyone on the same page for the inputs into the model. So it's not just STCA came in and said, hey, this is what you're doing. We went back and forth. We refined it. Another little clarification point here, the methodology of using ITE trips in the model was actually used back when, I'm not sure any of the council members here were on the council then, I wasn't in charge of the model at that point either. It was back when Jeff Brahms for the city and I believe Mike Birdzall with DEA were running the model. And that decision was made back then so that it, so that the results would more closely match the SEPA analysis. And Victor, you might have been involved at that point in time?
Yeah.
So I think there's just a couple clarifications there. Just want, want to get on the record for you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Next I have Deputy Mayor, followed by Councilmember Gamblin.
Thanks. Victor, you
Victor, you'd said something, and we just, Josh was just talking about it too, which is the the ITE manuals, trip generation rates, and how the model will do its own thing. But it sounds like, and clarify this for me, because this is where this is where my question is, is did this applicant do something different than what you said residential and other mixed use? So was something different done with this one than everything else that goes into the model? Did I hear that right, or?
Josh is probably the better person to answer, but I it didn't appear that that sort of this external kind of offline internal capture, especially internal capture going across the street. That was sort of a little odd, as we all noticed. And so, and to be fair to everyone, that it was one of the first mixed-use concurrency tests. So most of your other concurrency tests were either all residential or all commercial. The metropolitan market was a mix. It had both commercial and residential, but side by side in the same traffic analysis zone. And I don't know, Josh did, well, actually, I should know, since Transportation Solutions did the the TIA for that one. I'd have to look up what we assume, but I'm not sure. I don't know that you made any other adjustments for internal capture on that site, for that concurrency test. It's several years old. It's in, you know, 2015 or so, so we'd have to dig it up to see.
I think I could chime in a little bit. This is Andrew. This SCCA development we're talking about was kind of unique in its mix of mixed-use internal capture type trips. And so it it was applied, I don't want to say uniquely, but I think it was applied in a way befitting the nature of the development. It's just, I think what got lost in the shuffle was the double-counting SMOs internal trips, which is what we're talking about. Looks like it was applied fairly, is what I'm saying.
Sure. The and the other place this comes up, and again, having wanting to, everyone to be on the same page about how mixed use is handled, is is part of your response to the Growth Management Hearings Board is, does your 2035 land use plan and transportation plan, are they consistent with one another? And so the mixed use actually mixes better as you, you know, as that land use plan develops. It's actually challenging to to model a piece of a of a large mixed-use development because the other development isn't there for it to mix with. Again, the the model's going to do that when you when you model the 2035 buildout, you want to make sure that internal capture for that large subarea is happening the right way. And so I think this was an attempt to sort of estimate what would happen under future conditions when the existing conditions may not have supported it. And that's that's one of the challenges of modeling mixed uses. Seldom do you see a very, a large mixed-use development all built on the same day.
Okay. Um, oh, sorry, go ahead. A little.
There's also another little subtlety there. The the current research has shown that internalization happens up to, I want to say it's 1,000 feet, 1,250 feet, so a quarter mile. And we looked at the centroid of the land uses between the north side of Fourth, the existing town center development, and the proposed SCCA, and they were within those distance limits. So it gave us a little bit more comfort in going with that approach. Again, I think it was still slightly double counted, not to the full extent, but there were some double counting going on.
So I I want to ask an additional question about the the double counting to clarify, because you talked about the double counting was was within two different TASs, is that correct? Okay. So does that TAS also include across the street 228? Because I know there were a lot of trips shown that went and ended over there.
Uh, the.
Which means that somebody gets in a car and drives to East of Catholic and then doesn't come back out. Different TAS, same TAS?
Those are different, different TASs. The transpo analysis did not assume any internalization going across 228. It was just, just occur on the north and south side of Fourth there.
Okay. So so it 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 remains then that the model is showing that people are driving from the town center across the street and terminating a trip there? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And then one last question. You know, we saw that a lot of the trips kind of peeled off into the neighborhoods in the AM peak. Was there any kind of information about that? Because that seems odd.
Yeah, that one, we we did get into the trip generation workbook, and it does have, it has a function called trip chaining in it, that that we think explains some of that behavior that it has. It appears it must have some residential to residential trip making, especially if it's ending at a residential, for instance, an AM peak ending at a AM peak trip ending at a residential unit. So that's, that is most likely a, either a, you know, the half of the trip where someone dropped someone off at school, or dropped someone, you know, had their coffee and was coming back. The model does do those types of trips. But it does have, you know, adjustments in that trip generation workbook, which I think is going to come up as one of our next priorities. But but there are adjustments to be made where if we, again, if we observe that kind of behavior, even though the model's calibrating, but it, we scratch our head and going, is that, is that really what we think is going to happen? That trip generation workbook has adjustments to essentially correct that or change that. It's not a, you know, a one-size-fits-all. It can be modified. It was, we'll talk more about where the data and the procedures for that trip generation workbook came from when we get to that recommendation.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Thank you. Yeah, I got my questions answered from the Deputy Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, I think we're good.
Okay, I'll go to five. So I'll go to five. This one, this was a high priority, mainly to be consistent with the latest regional growth information. The network that the model uses is extremely large, and I, it's, it's not been updated to current PSRC forecasts around the city, I think, as as well as it could be. And so either if we're going to maintain that large TAS structure and sort of rely on the model, really what this helps the model to do, or not, is of trips that begin or end in Sammamish, are they coming from the north or the south, or the east or the west? You need a a regional basis to determine, are cars, are trips oriented to and from 520 or to and from I-90? There's really two ways in and out. And so that regional background growth is important to determine whether there's going to be more demand to the north or the south. There are a couple of ways to do that. Originally, you know, this was built by, the model was originally built by Mike Birdzall, and he was a fan of basically creating city models that were a subset of a regional model. He would take a very large regional model, collapse the external zones into fairly large TASs, but still use the land use there in an aggregate way to provide that basis for how many trips are going to be oriented to the north or the south, going in and out of the city. There are other ways of doing that, where you can look at PSRC growth forecasts near the edges. You know, what does PSRC say is going to happen on 202 and 520? What do they say is going to happen on I-90? And then just cut off your model there and proportion the external growth to those locations similar so that they match that PSRC forecast. So I'll let Josh say almost the same thing.
Victor said it well. The, the collapsing of the network to a smaller area is not necessarily my favorite approach. I would like, if a residential development comes in near the center of the city, I would like to understand the impacts on 202 or the operations, the demands on 202 and I-90, and have the model be dynamically responsive and be able to adjust, do these trips go north, do they go south? The, that would, will require an update to PSRC forecasts for land use, as well as, I I would get updated Redmond land uses, I would get updated Issaquah land uses. Issaquah's just gone through their model update, so they have a better understanding of current uses. So we could go through and update those land uses from those three agencies within the model. That was not the intent of the 2016 model update. So absolutely, it can be done. It was not the intent, but it can be if the council wishes that we move forward in that direction.
Any questions for us?
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, on on this particular one, it sounds like, and Victor, maybe you explained it, and I just didn't totally get it, but it sounds like this is a, I mean, it could be a big change, maybe not a big change. If we have the model calibrated with it doing it this way, wouldn't it be more prudent to make the appropriate tweaks as opposed to changing that methodology in a in a much larger way? I guess I want to, I want, again, I want to find that Goldilocks approach, or I want to find the just right approach. But I I also know that when you start unraveling a sweater, if you're not careful how you, you know, pull that thread, or I guess when you start to pull the thread, if you're not careful, you unravel the sweater. And the intention here isn't to unravel the sweater, but to find an accurate way to do this. And if we have a model that we know has been calibrated, and we know has been shown to be calibrated to a pretty high degree of accuracy, Victor, which I think you've even spoken to in the past, it, what is the benefit to making such a large change here as opposed to tweaking it in the appropriate ways? Because it sounds like, from Josh's response, that by tweaking it this way, we actually give ourselves a more degree of, of accuracy when we start looking at those developments in the center of town, which is exactly what people are concerned about with the town center, right?
Right. Yeah, so there there are kind of two approaches to this. The the one that takes less effort is is making the the model smaller. The one that takes more effort, if you want to keep the very large network, then, you know, it is updating land use and both, both to calibrate the 2016, a little little easier to figure out what the 2016 regional land use was. But we also want to have the right regional forecast for future modeling. So again, this model has to predict the future, both for in terms of the transportation element, it needs to predict, you know, 2035, and on your next comp plan cycle, it needs to predict 2040. And so the the land use update around the city hasn't kept up with the refinements inside the city. So to accurately forecast 2035 and 2040, or to more accurately, again, this one doesn't change things hugely, but it's it's a matter of sort of effort and and simplicity. If 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 you want to do it with less effort, you know, the approach of, let's, let's look at what PSRC says is happening around us in 2040, but not necessarily included in our model, but sort of calibrate to it. Or if we're going to include that PSRC network and zone structure, then let's make sure we have their transportation improvements, you know, their widening of I-90, their whatever demand shifts they're predicting for light rail and 520 corridor. Let's make sure that if we have the broad network and broad TAS structure, that it's accurate. So it's a trade-off between effort to make sure a big model is, has accurate input data, so you get accurate results, or a smaller model that requires less work, may not be as dynamic as Josh said, but may be more predictable or more defensible in some cases, if we can clearly show here, here's where that distribution's coming from.
I think too, if I can jump in a little bit, this is Andrew again, and it is a little bit of a philosophical, you know, there's not necessarily a right answer to this question, but from my perspective, if we can leverage the work that PSRC's modelers do and lean on that, because it's defensible and it's been approved on a regional level, I think that can provide value to the city and reduce the amount of work that can go into basically recreating that regional model at a city level. It's not the only way to do it. You know, you can, you can maintain the external zone structure that you have, and that can provide value too. But where you can gain leverage from regional modeling efforts, I think that's not a bad thing.
A little bit too, how it would affect determining people going north versus south? Because I think that's one thing that you talked about. Sorry, Victor, I didn't mean to cut you off there.
Yeah, and I, you know, I was going to suggest that Bob talk about this issue a little more, a little as well. He's a, he does a lot of regional modeling and small modeling, and so I think maybe if you could talk to Bob about how, how this might affect that distribution that the model does.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can add, I'm, I'm Robert Shaw, that, that this is, that all, 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 all models are, are, are art a little bit. So you do have choices that you can, you can make. But with our experience modeling a lot of areas where we have had the large outside area also, that the work to make sure that the the regional network is right, as well as the regional land use, that effort usually outweighs the amount of adjustment you would make to include the regional model impacts on your smaller area. One, one, one example that strikes me here is that we were working with the state of New Mexico on a statewide model, which is, of course, a very large regional model. They, they had started out modeling the whole US because they wanted to make sure and get the right number of trucks that went through Albuquerque, that of course, there's a lot of through movements through the state. And that it worked in the base year, okay, but in the future year, with the forecast, there was miscoding in downtown Cleveland that was throwing off the whole model. And that.
Well, I will agree, we should not use Cleveland in our model. I will agree to that.
Yeah, yeah, well, well, but it's, 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 it's the idea of scale that you often don't know what you don't know. And so, so when you're actually looking at it, if there are other improvements that have happened in the regional network, changes in capacity, lanes, the tolling, so forth, you, you, you may end up with more error that you don't know than if you, if you have a, a, a more constrained model, so you know what you know, instead of being stuck with not knowing what you don't know.
So Josh, would you speak a little bit to your concerns about what it will do to the the distribution, potentially?
Yeah, I think with with going this route, and I, I think somebody said it already, it's, you know, the, what we're really relying on, if we do, if we do reduce the network size, we're relying on the PSRC projections to be spot on on 202 and I-90. Those are really the main gateways in a much, much smaller model. So in making those assumptions, we're making, we're also making the assumption that the town center buildout, the city's future growth projections are spot on within the regional model when they run, because we are taking their endpoints, their gateways to the city, to the smaller network, and we're holding those as fixed. So if we're comfortable with that, then absolutely, we can make it smaller. It makes my life easier, but it doesn't allow for changes in uses within the town center or any other development to be as easily modeled with a dynamic endpoint, whether it be north or south of the city.
So if I, I hear, I think there's sort of the, I think Andrew said it, it's a philosophical choice, maybe. I think it was Andrew that said that, is that there's, it's, we can simplify it, but then we have kind of a double set of assumptions, because the PSRC assumptions make assumptions about our our land use. So if our land use changes, then their assumptions don't, then their, that model doesn't change with those assumptions. So it's simpler to do. So it's simpler to do, but it may, uh, it, it may not be as accurate. The, uh, using the broader model is potentially more work. It can be more accurate, but in order for it to be more accurate, it will take more diligence to make sure that it's more accurate. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, I would say so. And it's also the, you know, the, I think Andrew said it again, the, PSRC's gone through a lot of work to get an approved and adopted model. So I think piggybacking off of that work is, is completely appropriate here. And if we replace that external network with that from PSRC and use external land uses from PSRC, that is a, a path that we can go down. Um, it, it's philosophical and it's, modeling is art and it's not a science. So there isn't a right answer to this one. It's kind of at the whim of this council, what do you wanna do?
How often does PSRC update their models for us to adjust?
I believe it's every five years.
Yeah, it's, and it's, it's always within the, um, you know, the comp plan update cycle. So they, they update their model a couple of years ahead of the GMA requirement to do your update so that you have a fresh, so they've already built a 2040 forecast for your next comp plan update to look out to 2040. So they're currently a little ahead of you.
But they didn't have that back in 2016 when we started this one.
That's true. They did not. So yeah, everything's rolling. So that's, that's a good point, uh, Josh, is that, you know, there, we were, we were in 2016, you know, working with almost about, and about to be outdated PSRC model that was being updated to 2040 over the next couple of years. Um, so there is the, you know, how do we, you know, how do we match up models that are being developed on different schedules? Um, but I think Bob said the same thing is, you know, more, more data does potentially create more opportunity for mistakes in that data. The simplified model, it makes it, if nothing else, makes it easier to find mistakes or easier to understand why it's doing what it's doing. Is if, if we question, well, why is traffic going south now? You know, we added some more land use and it, we saw a big shift to the south, you know, we'd have to dig through, you know, hundreds of TAZs and hundreds of miles of network to try to figure it out in the large model, where if it's doing it in our small, smaller model, we'll be able to see, okay, well, we hit the capacity threshold of, of 520, you know, it's over the top and it, and, and in fact, now I-90 has some excess capacity, um, or the, you know, the growth clearly went up here versus there. So, um, a little easier to explain anomalies with a smaller model. Um, again, it's the Cleveland paradoxes, what, what the heck happened? Why did this change here a hundred miles away? Um, at least, you know, if we're making broader, uh, smaller assumptions closer to the city, um, we can at least explain why it's doing what it's doing very clearly and maybe change that judgment, um, when we see the results of the model. Kind, kinda like a sculptor, you know, chipping away at a sculptor and then this is not looking right, let's make an adjustment.
So you can still adjust it if you use the PSRC model, is it, if it's doing something that is clearly not what's happening on the ground?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, you can, all models are adjustable.
Okay. And how would you do it since they didn't have this in 2016? How would you do it to calibrate it to the 2016?
Yeah.
So again, they, they have a 2015 year, uh, base year model that we would pull that one and we'd have to assume some, a linear, likely a linear growth rate between their 2015 and 2040 models to get to a base year of 2016. Um, it's, it was done, uh, back when the model was updated, I believe in 2012, that was done back then. So it's, it's just an update of what we've done in the past.
Okay, I haven't seen any other questions.
Hey. Okay, the trip generation workbook. So, um, this is a, 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 something that's a little different, uh, than most models in the region. Um, Mike Birdsall was actually very much ahead of his time in the nineties when he developed this trip generation workbook. Um, it does some unusual things, has some unusual capabilities. Um, you know, it, it, it has been used consistently, so, you know, Josh has used it the way it was intended to be used. Um, it does several things. It, it scales trips back, uh, it has some functions, some, some travel demand management options, some pulldowns that you can, um, that use to adj- basically it can be used for calibration, it can be used for, um, testing, you know, future behavioral changes, you know, mo- mode shifts or travel behavior shifts. Um, it is able to model what's called peak spreading, so that's where, um, it takes the trip generation in the model and, you know, essentially the, what's happening in our region in particular is the, the peak hour and the peak hour volumes tend to stay about the same, the hour gets longer. The, the peak 15 minutes becomes the peak, half hour becomes the peak hour. And we see, um, there's a peak hour factor that's, you know, the proportion of that 15 minutes that, um, that happens at once. Um, you know, a low peak hour factor means you have a very sharp 15-minute volume, but then it kind of dribbles away at other times versus a, a 1.0 peak hour factor means the volume just stays the same for an hour. There's enough demand, um, and so people switch their travel behavior. So the mo- the model has that function, it's, it's already, it has to assume that to calibrate. If you look at, um, either ITE trip generation or, uh, FHWA, single family and multi-family, um, uh, travel demand model, trip generation, um, there is, you know, the model has to make that adjustment already to calibrate the counts. There is more demand than there is capacity. And so the model, that trip generation workbook allows us to, um, make adjustments to that. And so those adjustments are initially made to calibrate the model and then you can either hold those and say that behavior or that trend is that, that's, that, that behavior, that, um, trip generation rate or peak spreading is gonna remain constant, or the model, this trip generation workbook actually allows you to change that and assume less peak hour spreading, more peak hour spreading. Um, and then it has a, a linked trip function, um, where it's, uh, as trips, for instance, PM trips in particular coming inbound, uh, to the city, um, this model has a function where some of those trips may stop at an intermediate destination before they get to their final trip end. Um, and again, those are all adjustments that were based on research that Michael Birdsall did in, Andrew, do you remember the city? Oh, my age is showing. A South Pigeon Sound city, um.
It's not your age. Cause I'm not.
It's in our memo, a suburban city, but the, the data was collected in the late eighties, I believe. And so, you know, essentially what percentage of drivers are gonna stop at a retail establishment before they go home? How many are gonna stop at a general commercial or office building before, just for some other service before they go home? Um, and so the model does that. Um, and that's unusual. A lot of travel demand models don't do it explicitly as two trips during the peak hour. Um, and so when we report trips, we wanna understand that. Um, it's, we actually met with Mike Birdsall to get a refresher on how it worked, um, and also had a conference call with Mike and, uh, Robert and Andrew. Um, and all of us could use more understanding in terms of how that tool works. Um, it looks like, in our opinion, um, we, we all need a better understanding to see how that trip generation is functioning, um, to see if there are adjustments that need to be made for either the pre- peak spreading assumption and to make sure that again, sort of normal ITE adjustments to shared trips aren't being, again, in this case, double counted by the trip generation workbook. Is it already doing what ITE says is going to happen, particularly between two traffic analysis zones? This, this model is very comfortable having a trip start in Redmond, stop at a retail center and then go on to a house. Um, and so we need to under, we, we, uh, we wanna, that's often called a, you know, an, an internal capture or a pass-by trip. We wanna make sure we're not double counting or reducing some of those. Um, and so one of our, again, our primary recommendation is whoever's gonna do the modeling, review the modeling, let's, let's have Mike, Mr. Birdsall give us a training course in his tool. Um, it's been a while since any of us used it. Um, and I will let Josh fill in the rest. Okay.
Um, the, the one caveat there is it has been, what time is it? Eight, about five and a half hours since I've used it. Um, so I'd be pretty comfortable, uh, telling you whatever you wanna know. Um, I'm pretty, I understand what the trip generation book is doing and, uh, as, as you said, we're applying it correctly. So I'm, I'd love to pick Mike's brain, but I'm pretty confident we're using it right.
Okay, these medium priority ones, um, a lot of these are, um, just modeling, modeler, uh, suggestions. Um, the, this was a, just a, something we noticed that the, the link, model link lengths were not always the same as the measured distance. That happens by virtue of how the model, how the links were put in, whether they were put in manually or derived from a map. Again, it, it could represent the age of the model where the original model was built back when you had to input link lengths, it didn't read them off of, um, GPS created maps. Um, but in order to be consistent, we're suggesting, um, that the link lengths should be set automatically.
And so there are, within a travel demand model, it's not an easy thing to do to draw in a curved roadway. You have a start and an endpoint and you have a bunch of spline points in between. So there are a lot of those, uh, small deviations from the actual link length to what the link is, length is coded as, uh, have to do with the fact that the roadways are not, are not curved, uh, in the model. There are other areas where they have been intentionally edited, um, for calibration purposes. Um, both of those are preferences, uh, of the modeler. So it, it can be updated, uh, if it is done so, uh, we have to make sure that the model is recalibrated afterwards to make sure we're hitting those 2016 counts.
Um, and yeah, and just, um, to, to, to build a little bit on what Josh said, um, you know, the, when, when we change the length of a link, um, especially for calibration, for instance, we make it longer to discourage trips on it, um, that will also discourage future trips. Um, we can, you know, sometimes it's worth digging into a why, why do we have too many trips? Why are we making that adjustment? It is a valid adjustment to make the model calibrate, but was there some other reason, um, that the model was assigning trips to that link that we didn't want because a, another calibration tool might be to increase the operating speed of a parallel link? That would have the same effect as lengthening the other link. So, um, there are a lot, as everyone said, it's an arch and there, there are an infinite number of ways to calibrate a model, making links longer, making them shorter, assuming their speed is higher or lower. Um, and so, uh, we're looking for consistency, but again, it's, it's a, this is more of a modeler's choice, which is why we put it as a medium priority. Um, but one of the reasons we're concerned about sort of, what, what we characterize as maybe minor things is that the, that your transportation network is so full of vehicles now that, you know, every little car we add, you know, in some cases, they look, look to be acting erratically. You know, there's, there's not, there's not a free path for new traffic to use. And so all these adjustments we're making, uh, carry into the future when we're trying to model future traffic. Um, and so we wanna be sure that the, what was necessary to calibrate the model to a 2016 count is not gonna unduly influence what the model says is gonna happen in 2030 or 2035. Uh, but it is a very, it's a very subtle thing and that's why we made it a medium priority.
And, go ahead, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, if, 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 I can just add here that, that with all, all models, we wanna have them right, right for the right reasons. And, and yes, we are modeling human behavior and perceptions, but as much as we can get everything quantifiable with a, with a reason behind it versus editing link, link lengths, then we have more ultimate confidence in what the outputs are in the future.
I would agree. And I, I think, you know, just for the council's benefit, there are three or four modelers on the, on the call here tonight. And if you gave all four of us the exact same instructions and asked us for the exact same results, we'd all go about it four different ways. So it's not, it, we're, we're trying to predict human behavior and humans are nothing if not unpredictable. So we're doing the best we can. It would be done four different ways with four different modelers. So absolutely, there are lots of adjustments that can be made. I, in my opinion, it comes down to, uh, return on investment. Do you need to make these edits to have confidence in your model? If the answer is yes, let's do it. Let's make the edits and let's get the model to tell us the same answer or a different answer. And if it tells us a different answer, how can we be sure that one's the right one? It's, there has to be trust in the modelers and in, you know, a lot of these are preference type of adjustments and we can make preference adjustments all afternoon, all evening for the next month if you want us to.
I think just to chime in and to sort of reiterate what Bob was talking about, I think a lot of what builds trust in a model is this, you know, transparency and quantifiability, um, so that when we go down one of these roads of, you know, we're in a model audit, um, or just kind of, you know, I'm not crazy about looking over each other's shoulders. I, I, I feel like we as modelers kind of are all pretty honest dudes. We do the best we can. It's an art. Um, but as part of that, um, you know, we wanna make life easier for the guys that come after us, the guys, girls, whoever that come after us, that they can see what got baked into the model and they fully understand, you know, these assumptions. Um, so I, yeah, that, that would be just my two cents, that I wanna make life easier for whoever comes in after I'm gone or we're gone.
Enough of that one, I think. This one, uh, I can remember from, from back, I think in 2015, this was, um, again, uh, there were concerns that the intersection models back in even 2015 weren't accurately portraying, um, or telling the story of the amount of congestion that was being observed in the field. And so there were some, uh, latent demand added on to traffic counts at, at key intersections and attempt to represent unserved demand. If you have a thousand-foot queue of cars, um, you know, 50 cars at 20 feet long, um, you know, let, let's add that to the volume to try to see if synchro would then show us a thousand-foot queue. Um, it, uh, it looks like, you know, it got lost a little in the documentation, that's where it's from. I remember doing, suggesting that we all do it. Um, it could be that again, that, you know, the, the, the assumption for the saturation flow might also be influencing that same observation, is why isn't synchro showing us the big long queue that we're sitting in when we drive? Um, but also there's variability in those queues. You know, we tend to remember the worst thing that we drove through over the last week. We probably don't remember the days when it was easy. Um, and again, models are calibrated to one day of counts out of a year, um, and they're trying to replicate that one observation and they may not replicate all observations. Um, but when we do something like that, we just need to document it a little better so that, as Andrew said, the next person doesn't look at it and go, well, what's, why is the synchro volume different than the count that's in the data file, uh, or the, in the backup? Um, and so I think again, Josh and I might repeat ourselves here.
Yep.
Oh, we should've written that down, but I remembered, so that's, I wasn't that old.
Yeah, it's, and that was exactly how we did it. We had measured queues, uh, roughly 20 to 25 feet per vehicle. We figured out how many vehicles were in those queues and we added those to the counts. Um, if you go out and you just use the counted, the vehicles that went through the intersection, you're missing all of those vehicles that were sitting there. you're missing all of those vehicles that were sitting there at the back, you know, stretched all the way up to Holly Way, waiting to make that left turn in the morning. So we went through the, all of those adjustments were made within the model. The documentation process unfortunately was not completed due to tight deadlines and available budgets. Uh, so something moving forward, uh, doesn't matter. We need to make sure it gets documented, uh, within the project.
Any questions?
Councilmember Galloway.
So could you speak to what documentation means to you guys? What are you talking about documented?
Well, I, I'll take a shot at it. Essentially, you know, a, a memo somewhere or an appendix that says, you know, in order to account, in order to account for, um, long queues and unserved demand that wasn't captured by the counts, here's a table of the, of the volumes that we added to these intersection counts to try to account for that, to try to replicate it. So, so again, just so you don't have, you know, the, the next modeler or, or independent reviewer looks at a count that says there were 300 cars going through the intersection, but the, the Synchro file says there were 350. And, you know, if there's an appendix somewhere that explains where the 50 came from, you know, that's logical, then you're okay. But it looks like a mistake if you don't have that appendix. It looks like, you know, why did someone add 50 cars? Are they trying to make the level of service look worse? Um, so it's just, we just have to have that piece of paper that says, why did you make this adjustment? Just like for any model, we like to have a, a model documentation report that would explain if we made link lengths adjustments, why did we do that? If we made speed adjustments, why did we do that? What are all those dials that we turned and adjustments that we made, uh, to calibrate the model and which of those are we carrying forward into future forecasts and which ones are we not carrying forward? Um, again, it's just like Andrew said, so the, the next person can understand the, all those little tweaks that were made, um, typically for a good reason, but, but if you don't write down why you did it, then it becomes a question. And, you know, you have a, um, as, as you reach, um, sort of the, the complexity of a, of a system where people have a lot of questions about it, it's more important that you can describe very clearly how the model's working.
Okay.
So, so this is just about why, why, you know, why did we do that?
So I'm still not clear. So who measured the last queues? And are you saying that we don't have the documentation for the, on the modeling that was done, um, measuring that for, for this time? Are you saying we don't, we don't have the documentation or it doesn't exist or where, where did it come from?
Right, it was, um, I would say it was, it was more anecdotal than scientifically determined. I don't know if Josh has a different answer than that. Uh, when we, I think that when the, the 2016 counts were done for the 2016 baseline model, there, there wasn't an effort to actually collect that. It was more, um, you know, folks telling us, hey, I, I regularly am in a queue from, for instance, from 202 up to 37. And we, we've observed that, you know, not, not scientifically in terms of how many hours a day it happens or minutes a day it happens. But again, this was an effort, um, kind of using the Goldilocks, this was an effort to get closer. We, we all knew that there were more cars going through the intersection than we counted. So let's make some, a reasonable estimate of how many more there were.
Okay, so, so.
But it certainly could be.
Yeah, last question on this. So if there's no documentation now, or the documentation is someone saying, well, I remember this or remember that, which is basically no documentation, um, then how do we verify the accuracy of the model? How do we verify the accuracy of the output if we don't have access to the documentation on the input?
Right, and so you, the easy question is you can't. Um, this, this adjustment made the intersection level of service calculation more conservative in those locations, which, you know, generally everyone was fairly comfortable with, you know, let's, let's slightly overestimate the calculated delay rather than underestimate it. Um, but you could certainly, you know, without documentation, you can just take that adjustment out, um, and let the numbers be what was counted, um, or determine another way, try to figure out another way to estimate that unserved demand. Um, but if, uh, if you took that unserved demand out, which again would, because of a lack of documentation, it wouldn't be unreasonable, you know, the, the model or the intersection level of service calculator, I'll call it, um, would calculate slightly less delay because we were trying to fit fewer cars through the intersection during that analysis period.
I think also just to add briefly, um, from what I remember of reviewing the counts versus the input volumes, it wasn't a tremendous amount of unserved demand added. Um, it may have added a, a second and a few tenths of a second of delay. Um, but I think it was more, more just an effort to bridge that gap between throughput and unserved demand from an operational standpoint. I don't think it really had much impact, but again, it's good to document these things.
Thank you, Victor.
Anything else? For the next one. Uh, intersection peak hours, again, this, this is a, um, modeler's choice, analyst's choice. Um, and, uh, we have, we just, we have a difference of opinion on how this would work. So the, the city has essentially multiple, or, or each, each intersection really has its own peak, you know, the, because of the type of land use you have in Sumamish with a large number of schools and some pretty big schools, um, you have commuters that, you know, commute traditional times, you have tech workers that tend to commute a different time. Um, different intersections have different peak hours. Um, and there's, there's also a clarification about, um, whether this affects the travel demand model. So are we going to try to forecast multiple peak hours? Or are we going to try to predict what happens to those multiple peak hours or 15 minute peak periods? I mean, the, the peak hours, a couple hours in each intersection fluctuates from, you know, 7:30 to 8:30 or 9:00 when, when it peaks. Um, so yeah, it would be challenging to build, you know, five AM models in 15 minute increments. And I would argue you couldn't really build those models. Um, the model's not that smart. Um, and so one strategy is, okay, well, let's find the, the peak of all the peaks. Let's add each, all the intersections together, do sort of a weighted average and figure out, you know, what, what's the one hour out of the two hours that's the highest, which is what was done. And so you, you know, there's an argument to be made that that's consistent. So now you have a one hour travel demand model and we're, we're using that to forecast the growth for this one hour, this consistent hour of intersection level of service. Um, what that doesn't tell you though is, is how much worse those intersections that peak at a different time might get in the future. And so, um, you know, again, it's, this is, this is the artist or the preference. Do you want to be conservative? Do you want to be what I, you know, consistent mathematically, I guess? Um, so from our perspective, you know, we, we do similar work for other jurisdictions. Um, and so we build a peak hour model and we really don't know what peak it's modeling. It's modeling a peak between seven and nine and four to six. Um, but we, you know, we don't claim to know what peak we're actually modeling. Um, and then we apply essentially that new forecast, that increase in future traffic to the, to each peak of each intersection. So is it, you know, it's, it's probably a little conservative, but, but the other side of the coin is, does it, does it make sense to ignore intersections that peak, you know, half an hour later, um, and say, well, you know, nothing happens there, um, because we're, we're, we're adding growth to the low half hour, not the high half hour. So, um, this is a, you know, again, a engineer's judgment, modeling choice, you know, um, we can hear with Andrew, Robert and Josh, I'll have to say, well, we'll start with Josh and see if he even wants to hear from anyone else. Um, and it looks like there's a code reference here that, that maybe has to be dealt with if that change wants to be made.
Yeah, I, I worked through many, 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 uh, iterations of peak hours and I'm sure there are some council members that remember many, many council meetings where we went back and forth on peak, what a peak hour is. Um, it's written into the code, the exact times, uh, we did go the system peak hour route. Um, we compared it to other peak hours, um, within, generally within one to two percent. Um, there were a few outlier intersections, um, but most of those were captured. The, the peaks of the peaks were captured for the main point, for the most part, within the peak hour that we chose for AM and PM. And just to add what Victor said, don't make me try to do this in the demand model. It's next to impossible. Um, and it can be done in the conversion between the demand model and operations model, if that's, if you choose to do so. But again, then you've got two models that are using different volume sets. Um, significantly different volume sets in some cases, um, at the turn movement level.
Yeah, and we're, we are not suggesting you build multiple travel demand models in 15 minute increments. So that, we are, we are not suggesting that at all. But, you know, for instance, uh, you know, a elementary school that may peak earlier than the peak of the peak, um, you know, as growth occurs, are there going to be more students at that school and more volumes? Um, and there may be other ways to address that, but, um, but we just, you know, we're suggesting a conservative approach. Um, and, and, you know, we talk about things making only a one or two percent difference in Sumamish, but you only have one or two percent surplus capacities on a lot of your roads. I mean, that's, that's where you are. And so these, these, these tiny incremental differences over time are what people are noticing and getting frustrated over. Um, you know, you don't have 15 or 20% surplus capacity to where, you know, underestimating by a percent, you know, and again, it's, it's how many times we do it. How many, how many iterations of, of concurrency tests, we add a little more traffic and it, it doesn't make a much difference, it doesn't make much difference. But, um, again, we made it a medium priority. It's, it's not a have to, it's a, it's, it's our suggestion of this would be a, a more conservative way to look at, um, sort of global impacts. Don't see anyone looking like they're really needing to ask the question. So this one, um, again, this is more of a, um, I guess a best practices or current practices recommendation. Uh, again, there, there is a conflict with the, um, with the code as it's written right now, but it's, so it's, it may be a future step. Again, that's why it's a medium priority. Um, the, some of the methodologies available now weren't available in 2015 and 2016 when the models were originally built. Um, so we're suggesting that we think about those for future analysis, um, just to get kind of caught up with the rest of, at least the state. Um, and again, this goes to, you know, how, how, um, how the public, how other stakeholders view your results. Um, but again, it's not, it's not uncommon for cities to adopt a specific level of service methodology or year. Um, it's most common for cities to say, or the latest version of a manual. That, that is not necessarily a good idea either. That means as soon as the manual changes, your level of service policy changes. So you don't necessarily want that flexibility and I can see Josh agreeing with that one. Um, but in order, you know, again, for sort of acceptability by anyone that, you know, again, the next modeler or the, the constituent that wants to understand how things are being done, their, the latest version of Synchro is the, is the HCM six methodology. Um, WashDOT developed a protocol for that software. Um, that's where that 1,750 vehicles per hour saturation flow versus 1,900 comes from. So it's a, it's a statewide suggestion on how to use Synchro. And so extremely defensible if projects are being, um, appealed or not appealed, if you're, if you're, you know, trying to defend a decision about intersection level of service, you know, that's the resource in the state of Washington, most people go to. Not to say you, there's, you can also defend HCM 2010 or HCM 2000. Um, what happens in these different versions is one will, one will be able to model a U-turn and the next one will, or one will treat a right turn lane like a free flowing lane that doesn't even exist and another one will manage that lane with the green time. So each version will, you know, believe it or not, if you run, you know, HCM 2010 or HCM 2000, you get different levels of service at the same intersection for the same count because the methodology changes slightly. Um, but as a recommendation for moving ahead in this case, um, we think it's a good idea to move and be more consistent with the region. Um, and I'll let Josh say some of the stuff I said.
Yeah, I think, you know, there, there are some somewhat unique, uh, geometric, uh, layouts at some intersections within the city that could not be modeled appropriately with the HCM 2010 methodologies. So when we were, when we began this work in early two, 2016, we did use the most current 2010, HCM 2010 version. We found some of those inconsistencies, uh, inabilities of the 2010 methodology and that's where we referred back to the HCM 2000 methodology in those, uh, a few instances. Um, moving forward, absolutely, if you're going through a wholesale redo, you should absolutely look at HCM six. Um, is it perfect in every situation? Haven't looked at it yet for your city, so I can't say yes or no there, but, um, absolutely.
No questions? Uh, peak hour factor, um, again, this is where there's, there's some precision in, um, in the current methodology that, um, you know, the, the WashDOT protocol suggests that you not do that. Um, doesn't mean you can't, um, again, um, a medium priority. This is more, again, uh, to have a, a methodology consistent with the region, it just makes, tends to make things more defensible, um, less justification that you have to provide. Um, but again, it wasn't, wasn't available, you know, as Josh said, this protocol was not available to even look at in 2016 when the model was being developed. Uh, so again, this is more of a moving forward consideration. Do you want to look at, um, this kind of change?
So with, with this one, um, I understand the reasoning behind the WashDOT guidance. Um, I don't necessarily always agree with it though. When you have a location, uh, say a signalized intersection where you've got a school that has very, very sharp peaking characteristics on one leg, um, this methodology kind of flattens that out and says, and washes it out with all of the approaches and averages them all out. So it, again, it's a preference and a policy decision on which route you would like to go for there.
Yeah, and I think this, um, I think this sort of guidance from WashDOT, um, I think kind of comes from that, the, the, the other discussion we had about, um, you know, there's, there's knowing what you know or knowing what you don't know are these, you know, the, the schools are a unique factor. Um, they, they do tend to be very different. Uh, but again, we're, we're measuring the peak hour factor, which is a very discreet piece of information at an intersection on one afternoon in over one year and saying that's what always happens there. And so I think the DOT policy is, well, let's, let's, let it, let it, let it, let's wash that out a little and make it the average of the approaches because we really don't know that that's the exact thing. Um, so it's, 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 it's making the tool a little more blunt for the sake of defensibility, I think, so that you don't have to defend that. But it's, again, it's modeler's choice. Um, not, um, from our perspective, it's being consistent with a document that everyone else is likely to compare your work to, but doesn't mean you can't do it the way you're doing it.
And one other thing here, it, whatever you choose to go forward with, I would adopt it into your code so that it's applied consistently moving forward.
Yep, agreed with that. Um, this one, just, you know, again, something we noticed, uh, in terms of software input. Um, Sidra is the software you use to evaluate roundabouts. Uh, it's Australian, uh, requires geometric information. So a roundabout level of service is, uh, influenced by traffic volumes and essentially the shape of the roundabout, you know, how big is it? How many lanes go in and go out? Um, so there's a different program for that. Um, we just noticed some, um, you know, inconsistencies in, um, how it was applied and I think Josh agreed with us on that one.
I went back and I, I dug into it. There was one intersection it, that needs to be updated. So yeah, I agree. Update the one roundabout and move forward.
Yep, and this is just so you can say, you know, we are being as accurate as we can. So. There's one here, actually one of them is an interesting one, the, the Sidra roundabout has what's called an environmental factor. It's a. It's a, essentially represents how comfortable drivers are with roundabouts, either uncomfortable or comfortable. There's been an assumption that, for instance, again, something that would be good to codify is when you first open one, you know, the comfort level is lower than after it's been in operation for 10 years. And so you actually, using the WashDOT protocol, the, the capacity of roundabouts increase over time as drivers become more familiar with them. Now, after watching some drivers drive through roundabouts that have been here for a long time, I'm not sure that's always the case, but, but that's the theory, is that the, the roundabout capacity increases over time. And it's not an insignificant amount, it's, it's a 10% or 15% increase in capacity between sort of the low environmental factor and the high environmental factor. But it's, it's important to be consistent and, you know, treat new roundabouts one way, and I guess we would call them mature roundabouts the other way. And again, it's all about, you know, defensibility from a, an external reviewer's perspective. It's like, okay, well, they're doing things the way everybody, theory, everybody in the state's doing them the same way, but there always are outliers. I just talked about that one, I got a little ahead of myself. So I think, you know, and Josh is correct though, you know, it may not affect, it doesn't affect things now, but again, as we, as we get to the upper limits of intersections, that, that little factor, you know, might not change the level of service today, but five years, 10 years from now, when we're, you know, you're doing a future concurrency test, it, it does determine when you're going to run out of capacity, you might run out sooner than later, or later than sooner, depending on the environmental factor.
The, the one caveat there, the Sammamish roundabouts are all level of service A and expected to be so in the future. So they're designed well, well, they're operating well, the design of the 32nd and Saguapine Lake leaves a little bit to, to be desired, but other than that, the implementing this one, yeah, absolutely do it, won't have an impact on the results though.
And then, yeah, I think, you know, these low level ones, you've all seen the report, if you, if you had any questions about the low priority ones, these are getting really into the weeds of, of, you know, again, how one modeler would model things versus the other. They're not likely to have huge impacts on how the model predicts future traffic. It's more about, you know, again, ease of a third party reviewing it and understanding what's in there. But if you, unless you have specific questions about them, it's probably not worth the rest of our time to talk about those and maybe circle back to questions you might have over the higher, medium priority recommendations. Okay, we completely filled up your brains and there's nothing left.
Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. Now, I think the, the takeaway from this is that modeling the future becomes unreliable when combined together. And so I think the idea behind making some of these changes is that it may not change results on a particular concurrency test, but in the future, it becomes more challenging to know what the impacts are. And so I think, you know, some of these suggestions are, are good to, to implement sooner than later, just so that our future is, is more predictable.
Yeah, thank you. So mostly the high priority in particular, maybe some of the mediums will help have a pretty good impact on predicting future traffic. And a corollary of that is it will prevent us from erroneously issuing or not issuing concurrency certificates, so that it does have some material impact if we do nothing. Is that fair to say?
In our opinion, it does. And again, I, I think the, the capacity constraints to me are the, are the biggest issue. I'm, I'm concerned that the model is shifting traffic to other routes that you, you know, either aren't monitoring because they're residential side streets, you know, there, there are parallel routes to 228th that traffic can disappear to if we're not allowing it to get there. Or it's, it's diverting to Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway and, and we're not necessarily, we're not monitoring that currently, and so we're maybe not seeing because we're not tracking, you know, an exacerbated situation there. So, yeah, it's, it's just you have some very challenging traffic conditions and the objective was, let's have the tool be as usable as it can primarily in generating V. We're, we're trying to figure out what is the, the V to look for when we're doing concurrency evaluations.
Thank you. Can I seek some clarification on one of your first statements on, I think it's one of the first slides, not the first slide, several minor corrections. Is that more a testimony of the ability to program those changes such as new default values, et cetera, but not a testimony on the impact of those corrections?
Uh, yes, yeah. So like, you know, changing the capacities of those turns is very easy to do, changing the, correcting the land use in the TAZ where the metropolitan market, very easy to do. There is a recalibration exercise to look at, you know, okay, now that we've made those changes, are we still, is the model still predicting in 2016 what was counted in 2016? And depending, you know, depending on how much things change, there's a level of effort to make those other minor adjustments Josh talked about. Do we, do we need to under, you know, look at, are there, are there other links that need to be adjusted to get the traffic where we counted it? You know, trying to, again, trying to account for driver behavior, there, there are some people that probably drive on Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway because they would rather look at a lake even though they're stuck in traffic than look at trees. That's the kind of stuff we deal with in travel demand forecasting. There, there are people that drive along Lake Washington Boulevard because it's a nicer drive than 405, but it's not faster, it takes longer, but it's more pleasant. So, so those are things we have to adjust, but, but yeah, those, the, again, the, the land use inconsistency, the model self-correcting, but that's just a, it's housekeeping so that when any third party looks at your model, they see a clean model that doesn't have to make this big self-correction, because it just, it just raises a question. You know, it may be that it doesn't affect future results at all, but it looks strange. And so we want a model that looks clean, because if people are questioning it, we don't want to give them anything to question, or at least reduce the number of things they might question. So the, the uncertainty is when we make those changes that are easy to make, what's it going to spit out and how much effort, you know, do we have for calibration? It may cali, you know, it may calibrate just fine, or it may calibrate not as well as it calibrated before, but still within, within FHWA guidelines, which are pretty loose. You know, the model calibrates much better than those right now. And so, yeah, the, the corrections are pretty easy to make, there's some, some uncertainty about how much effort it takes to recalibrate, but then once you recalibrate, you can then have, then have a model that's useful for a future analysis, whether it's the next concurrency test or whether it's the, you know, making sure that the future land use and future transportation plan are aligned for the call plan.
And the, the only thing I'd add there is it's, it has the potential to have an effect. I, I don't think that any of us on the call today can, can tell you what that change would be, or if there will for sure be a change. It's just, it's something that we don't know the answer until we go through the process.
Councilmember Campbell.
Victor, when you were talking about the HP four, one of the notes said that if you made the change, you reran the model and you didn't find any changes to the results. I'm just unclear on when we're looking at this with HP one, HP two, HP three, HP four, was the statement on HP four, did it mean that simply running the model again with the change to HP four by itself indicated that there was no change to the model? And adding to that, if we aggregated all the changes, HP one through HP four, and not these moving forward model changes that will, you know, allow us to be more accurate in future analysis, as you said, but changing things which are indicated currently, if we did an aggregate, all the HP, let's say HP one through HP four, if all those were changed, an aggregate of that output, has that been run? And has the model been run with that aggregate? And I have one more question too, when you're done with that.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, the easy answer is no. Josh ran, looked at the sensitivity of just comment, recommendation HP four, but it did not include one through three or five. So there would be a different answer if we did, made all those recommended changes at once. The change that Josh made didn't affect calibration, so I believe that's why he did HP four by itself, because the other ones do require that we relook at the calibration and make sure that, that modified model is still matching 2016 ground counts. So yeah, we would expect a different answer from what Josh got rerunning with HP four only if we made the other improvements.
Okay.
Or changes, whether you want to call it improvements or not, changes.
Thanks, Victor.
But we wouldn't necessarily expect the result of the concurrency test to change. We would expect slightly different volumes or potentially a change in volumes, but not necessarily the results of the concurrency test.
Right, but as you just said, what we are looking at is, does it have the potential to have an effect? And that, that's what I'm interested is, obviously, no one can say what it is, but once we aggregate all of those together, it does have the potential to have an effect, and that, that's what I'm interested in. One last thing, and I'll be done. Victor, you mentioned just briefly Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway and traffic being dumped there. In the, in the intersection LOS and the segment LOS, since Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway does not have any intersections, how does that impact on the model here in where traffic is being pushed and where it's being accounted for by not having Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway being looked at? Could you just briefly speak to that?
Sure. Well, it is being looked at, so you're, it is, it is in the travel demand model, because we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to model 228th and Sahaliway without knowing what, or what Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway does. So, so there's a distinction, you're, you're not measuring and documenting and recording its level of service or its V over C ratio, but it is in the model. The model is determining how much traffic uses Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway versus Sahaliway primarily, it's, it is the delays at 202 and the northern intersections at Redmond that influence, you know, which route I'm going to take home, or which route a driver's going to use. And so those, you know, that's, those are pieces of the model we would suggest keeping in, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't cut it off at the city limits because you do need to know, and the model needs to know, what's happening at 202 and Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway, what's happening at 202 and Sahaliway? And that's why, for instance, you know, that, that big delay at Sahaliway, you know, there, there's more delay, it's that extra five minutes of Sahaliway delay kind of negates or, or does tend to push traffic to Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway, because the model thinks, I'm going to be stuck in that right turn lane for five minutes. And so, you know, if it's five minutes faster to use a slower Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway and Inglewood Hill Road to get to the same place, that's what's going to happen. So that's, that's the sensitivity we want to test with that right turn lane capacity. But just to be clear, Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway is in the travel demand model. The amount of cars that use it is influenced by, essentially, it's a travel time model. It estimates intersection congestion, it estimates link friction, so, you know, if you have one lane at some point, you know, and we've counted that number, it's, it's full, and it, traffic starts looking for a shorter route in time generally. So it's there, it's just not in your spreadsheet for concurrency testing because previous councils made a decision to exempt it from testing.
Okay, thanks, Victor. Thanks, Josh.
Okay, Victor, I had one question for you. One of the comments that I had was, you know, you've got a comment in here about minor changes or minor corrections, and, and I look at it on the other side of, of saying, you know, that we've got, you know, critical errors. And I was trying to figure out what that difference is, and I've, and I want to see if you, if this makes sense to you, is that it comes down to, we've got, some of our roads have got 1% to 2% of, you know, capacity that's left on them. So when you start adding up all these changes and, and these errors that we found, and you add up all those incremental changes, we go from minor corrections to a critical change. And so it's kind of like, I can see where each minor little correction, all of a, all of a sudden goes from minor, 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 bigger, 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 to all of a sudden, you know, you, where you're on a road where you only have 1% to 2% to play with, where all of a sudden you're in a different category. And so I think that's where, where we're at on some of these roads, there just isn't room to, to play, unfortunately.
Yeah, and we, you know, again, we, minor for, you know, because they're, you know, we didn't say revamp, you know, change every right turn in the whole model, but there, you know, those particular ones, you know, really influence the volumes on your critical links, whether it's Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway or 244th, or sorry, yeah, even 244th and 228th and Sahaliway. And it's important to know what's going to happen now and the future, because you have big decisions to make about the facilities you want on those links. And so, yeah, like you said, you're at the, you're at the point where some improvements that are proposed, you know, only add a little more capacity, and therefore, if we, if the changes we've suggested add a little more traffic, you, you have a capacity problem, or a V over C problem. So, and again, it's, it's defensibility, people have been questioning what the model's doing. I think this is an opportunity, whatever we do, to, to come out of this and say, we've looked through the model, we've, you know, polished everything we could polish, and everybody's going to live with what comes out of it now.
And I, I think it's also important to note that not all of these suggested high priority, medium priority are going to increase the level of traffic on all of your links throughout your city. It's, the, the changes could have an effect. Whether they go this way up or whether they go down is yet to be determined, and they could potentially all negate each other in the end. It's also possible that they are all cumulative and add on to each other. So without doing some sort of testing here, we don't know what we don't know.
Yeah, so Victor, a couple, a couple of things. One thing you said is that, you stated that you believe that these are all things we should clean up for the future runs, that there's no intention to go backwards, right? And there'd be no point, because again, there are so many factors, correct?
It's, it's, again, your decision on that, it's, but for sure, going forward, we think it's real important to make these changes. There's, you know, going backwards is, causes a lot of, wasn't our job to look at the implications of going backwards, it's really, where is the model sitting now? These recommendations are intended to give you a tool to make the best decisions you can moving forward.
Excellent. And you've talked a lot about defensibility. I guess I have a question about the defensibility of our capacity number. So you talk about, you talk about the defensibility of V over C, but the capacity number that we use on some of our segments, we've had that discussion before, we already know that the capacity of the road is greater than the capacity that we're using because we've measured a higher volume, and we had the discussion that your capacity, the roadway, can't actually be higher than a measured volume. So is that something we need to look at as well then, if we're talking defensibility?
Yeah, I've been asked that question by a lot of folks, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, you, and we've yet to connect on what, the definition of capacity, but it was, I'd have to say it was outside our current scope, that's a policy you've already adopted, that is, is a different task that I think takes a lot more effort.
And Pam, I'll, I'll try to jump in there. I think the, the Sammamish, city of Sammamish calculated capacity is just that, it's city of Sammamish specific. And the fact that you're using thresholds of 1.1 for corridors and 1.4 for segments gets the Sammamish definition of capacity closer to a more universally accepted highway capacity manual definition of capacity.
Yeah, but from a math perspective, it just feels like we ought to do it the right way, which is you use a real capacity and you don't go so high on your ratio, because that's not what the intention is. And Victor, we had a- And Victor, we had a long discussion, I guess, two years ago now about the segments on the north end of Sahali because they have fewer intersections and they don't behave the same way as some of your more urban streets. And that's why we're seeing these higher volumes because the capacity we're using is too low because it's assuming, right? It works better as you go further south where we've got all those intersections and you've got people doing what is expected for those capacities that we use. So I think, you know, if anything, it actually, just to be clear, Victor, it actually isn't currently our adopted policy because that's the policy that we had to, that was invalidated by the growth management hearing board. So it isn't currently our policy. And it just feels like the right math to do is to use the right capacity and then to come up with a volume over capacity ratio that makes more sense because we're doing exactly what Victor says we shouldn't do in the traffic model, which is we're tweaking something and then we're having to tweak something else to compensate for the tweak we do down here. And instead, we should just use the simpler math, the more accurate math.
Sure. And again, it's a big question in terms of what capacity means, what the Florida capacity number means, but I think it's something you could look at, may want to look at, but again, outside the scope of this particular study, which is what our presentation's about is we didn't look at C. We're trying to figure out primarily B. What's the volume we need to analyze and how do we get B right?
And is there really a question?
Mayor?
Hang on for a second.
Mayor, members of council. Mayor, members of council, I want to caution us about proceeding down these avenues that are off-topic that may have legality or legal impacts of the other issues that we're dealing with here now. So if we can just stay on topic.
Sorry, he brought up the defensibility of our models and our code, so I thought that was part of the topic. If the council wants to further discuss V over C, we should do that in an executive session.
Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor, is that what you wanted to speak about?
Yeah, I just wanted to keep us on topic.
Can I be heard for a minute?
Who is that?
I'm sorry.
Okay, you're behind my chat box, so I can't see you. Okay, Mr. Shaw. As long as it's not on the V over C, you're welcome to speak.
Well, it's Peter Egbert. I just wanted to say that it sounded to me as if there was some confusion about defensibility in terms of modeling experts talking about what's defensible in their opinion. And it sounds as if there are many different opinions by modeling experts. And then what's defensible in a legal sense? And I just want to make sure that no one is confusing the two right now or who might later look at this conversation because I think that would be a confusion of how the term's being used. It would be very unfortunate.
Okay, are there any other questions? Seeing none. All right, well, I want to thank everybody for a great discussion, a great presentation. And we were going to close out, I don't know about anybody else, but Sammamish 5? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute Sammamish health and safety break.
Thank you, Victor, thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Victor, thank you, Josh, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Let's see if who else I can find on here. Mr. Broton, thank you. Did I, hopefully I didn't miss anybody. Okay, thank you, everybody. Great presentation. Thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you very much.
All right, so let's see how fast we can do with this. All right. Okay, next thing on our agenda, next thing on the agenda is the food and rental assistance grant funding, and that is Mr. Sugg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening again, council. Mike Sugg, Senior Rancher Analyst. I am joined on the phone by Rita Bod, our Community Services Coordinator. And on July 7th, Rita provided one of her regular updates to the City Council on the state of human services during COVID-19. It was clear from this report that the community's need for food and rental assistance is increasing due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Council listened to this need, and in response, Mayor Moran and Deputy Mayor Malachow are proposing additional funding for these nonprofits working in the areas of food and rental assistance for the council's discussion tonight. The three organizations proposed for funding are St. Vincent de Paul, which provides rental assistance within Sammamish in an amount of $20,000; Isqo Food and Clothing Bank, which provides food to the south end of Sammamish as well as grocery delivery to all of Sammamish in the amount of $10,000; and Hope Link, which provides food assistance to the north end of Sammamish at $10,000. These three organizations are embedded in our community, and they have been diligently delivering services throughout the pandemic. They also have a proven track record of providing the services for which funding is proposed, and they consistently surpass the service goals set out in their contracts with the city. For these reasons and because of the increase in demand and urgency for these services, there was no solicitation process for this proposed grant funding. And this funding will allow these organizations to continue to deliver high-quality services to our residents. We would also like to note that the providers we fund are all part of an informal network. So if a resident comes into St. Vincent de Paul seeking rental assistance, it's very likely that they have needs in other areas of their life. St. Vincent de Paul will listen to the resident and refer them to the food banks or to any of the other organizations serving our residents in order to ensure that all their needs are being met. Rita and I, excuse me, Rita and I are happy to provide additional information or answer questions. And with that short introduction, I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, so to get this onto the floor, do I hear a motion?
I don't want to. I'm in the queue.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, I'm in the queue.
Okay. Pam? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Stewart?
Yes, a couple of questions and then I will throw the motion up there. The questions are, how did we choose the amount of money? If we don't have an answer, it's okay.
I can roll them if you want me to because it was in my email.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, you want to answer that?
The $2 amounts for Isqo Food and Clothing Bank and Hope Link, I had put in my email. It was just somewhat on what we had already provided to those two providers earlier. And I think that's in, yes, it's in this, back on May 5th, when we had given 7,500 to each. So considering that there's been an uptick, I increased the amount. And I think in the future, if there's additional need, that the council is getting these regular updates for this very reason so that we can react and provide additional funding if needed.
So that's great, I appreciate that. I would like to go ahead and actually make a motion that we allocate $140,000 in grant funding in the following amounts. It would be $20,000 to Imagine Housing, Isqo Food and Clothing Bank, St. Vincent de Paul, Friends of Youth, and Lifewire Survivor Advocacy Services, and $10,000 each to the Crisis Clinic, Crisis Line, and to the Eastside Legal Assistance Program. And my rationale for that, well, so that's my motion.
Second.
In speaking to that motion, I picked that number based on a couple of factors. One, the $140,000 would bring us up to 180,000, which is on par with what Redmond has provided. It is also, it is more than what Isqo provided, but we do have nearly twice the number of residents that Isqo has, and we have essentially the same number of residents that Redmond has. So that would be on par. I also picked the organizations in the dollar amounts based on the grant funding that was provided by the Human Services Commission. So it's not completely proportionate, exactly, if you run the numbers, but it is relatively proportionate. And I added in a couple of organizations to assist with abuse and domestic violence because we also know that abuse and domestic violence are also higher right now with everyone in sort of the sheltering place and with kids not being in schools and having the ability to get out. So this will still provide the same level of funding that you guys have requested. It actually increases, I think, the level of funding to both Isqo Food Bank and Hope Link. It's the same level of funding that you recommended to St. Vincent de Paul. And because all of this money is reimbursable through the CARES Act, it actually won't really come out of any of our funding long-term. It will be something that we can get reimbursed for and needs to be spent before October 1st. And I apologize for being on my phone. There's someone who's trapped in a car, so I'm trying to assist this. So just so you know why I'm looking at my cell phone.
Deputy Mayor, you're up on the queue.
Actually, I think Councilmember Treen was before me, I think. Nope, I'm not here, sorry. So a couple of things. One, I don't want to compare ourselves to Redmond and their contributions. Their budget is much larger than ours, so I don't think we necessarily compare comparison just based on members of the organization. And I don't mind funding some of these other organizations, but I don't think we've got a lot of feedback from these organizations. And so I would prefer to differ on this until we get a little bit more information from Mike, Rita, and these organizations and what their needs are. I think, just to caveat that, I understand there's an increase potentially in the need for, you know, somebody who has, you know, deep crisis management. The question is, is the funding that they have currently adequate to support their needs or is there an additional need? And so I would prefer to understand what the need is before just simply throwing dollars out at it. Whereas the report that we got from Rita last week was fairly centered on some of these organizations that we've been in touch with. So I guess, I don't disagree with you, Councilmember Stewart, that we might want to look at some additional funding in other areas. I guess I would just prefer to know what the need is before attaching dollars to it.
Councilmember Ross, followed by, actually, it's Councilmember Treen, followed by Councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Moran. Yeah, I won't be, I can't support the motion at this time. I'd be making a different motion.
Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, I don't think we should keep comparing ourselves to our neighbors. They have different needs. This is clearly driven off what we've asked Rita and the team to assess our human service needs for Sammamish. And this items that we've listed is the direct response to the deficits that we're showing in our latest report. And so I would support the proposal as is, $40,000 as spread as articulated in the agenda bill. And I do, going forward, will continue to assess Sammamish's needs and some of the organizations perhaps that Councilmember Stewart mentioned may come to the surface, but let's work the process, and the process is to keep an eye on what Sammamish needs, and through that, Rita will help us determine some of those needs.
And Councilmember, Councilmember B. Gamblin?
Yeah, I concur with Councilmember Ross. What has been investigated and put forward on the agenda item is, again, a little bit more researched. I'm comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with chucking a whole bunch of other stuff on there that I haven't researched and haven't had a chance to look at the need, so I won't be supporting that motion.
And Councilmember Stewart?
A couple of things. Deputy Mayor made it clear that her numbers were based off of what we provided before. We don't actually have any numbers from any of those organizations in terms of what their shortfalls or needs are, just to be clear. And I will also remind the council that on August 1st, the moratorium on evictions and foreclosures will be lifted in the state. So I do believe that if we do not act soon, there could be a tidal wave, a tsunami of needs from a housing perspective that will come in very quickly. And that will create other needs in terms of food and shelter. Again, this is money that we will be reimbursed through the CARES Act. So if we don't spend it on COVID-related expenses, then we won't, it won't go to our community. It will just stay in the coffers of the federal government. So I think that this money is intended to get to the people that need it the most, and that is the whole point for this. And while we may not have specific information on how much money crisis lines need and survivor advocacy services and legal assistance for those suffering from domestic violence, we don't have the specifics. We don't have any specifics on how much people need food. We just know that there is an uptick and that people are in need and that that, those needs and that pain and suffering is only going to get worse here in the near future.
Okay, and then I'm going to make a comment, and that is, I totally agree with Councilmember Stewart on the standpoint that we've got to get something done, which is why Deputy Mayor and I wanted to get something done this week. I agree we need to get something done. However, I am not in a position tonight where I'm ready to throw out stuff to organizations that I have no idea what the needs are from where we started to what they're doing from March to where they were today. You know, how many citizens have they served? How many? That's the research that at least has been done in those organizations. I would want Rita and Mike to call them all, find out how many citizens have been served, and find out, you know, get some background on them to see, you know, get a feeling for what's needed before we just start putting money allocations toward it. I have no problem putting money allocations out, but I want to make sure that if somebody needs 30,000, we're putting it there versus giving them 10,000. I want to make sure that we get the money out, but we get it out to the right spots to the right people. And not just willy-nilly because we're in a hurry to do it. So I think we stay on track for what we were doing, and I think we ask for Mike and Rita to do their jobs this coming week and make some phone calls and find out where it is our residents are going and what is needed, and, you know, bring that information back. And then we can make an assessment of where some money should go. But to just do it blindly, for one, I can't do that. Councilmember Ritchie?
I would recommend that, more to the mayor's idea, just to kind of put some direction behind this, that I'd request that Councilmember Stewart turn her motion to direction to ask our human services team, our staff, to reach out to those organizations within the next week so that we can have a better idea of what the need is so that we can act on that next week. I think we have a meeting next week, God help us. I think we have a meeting next week, God help us. And if, once we have a more clear indication of what those needs are, so maybe as opposed to a financial ask today, maybe we move forward on the original motion today, and then a separate motion to direct staff to try to come back with the clarity that some of my fellow councilmembers have been asking for, but to put a date certain on it, because I do agree that we are under a certain amount of constraint in terms of time, not to mention specifically the needs of the folks that are currently in need right now, and the deadlines that we're facing with our CARES Act funding. I mean, if we don't utilize that money, then, you know, that's kind of a shame. So I would hope that we can at least put feelers out there to the organizations that Councilmember Stewart asked for, and frankly, any others that may be in a position to help our citizens with social services, whether they're helping us from within Sammamish or they're organizations that are regional supporters and they help citizens of Sammamish as well as other communities and other entities within our region. So I would maybe hope to move forward on two separate tracks. Move forward on the proposal as is from the mayor and deputy mayor, and then maybe a separate motion to direct staff to get that information so that we can do something more well informed next week. Thank you.
Okay, I want to plug Mr. Sugg in here because he was kind of over here dancing with his, waving his hands around. So I'm going to ask Mr. Sugg to weigh in.
I just wanted to provide the input that Rita had mentioned on the July 7th meeting, which was, are all the organizations that we fund through our Human Services Grant Program are required to provide quarterly reporting? So tomorrow, July 15th, is the deadline for second quarter reports, and all of the organizations that Councilmember Stewart mentioned are organizations that we currently fund through that two-year program. So I think turning this around for next week's meeting is a little too tight for staff at this time. If we did want some more information and kind of a better picture, I think taking that second quarter reporting, in addition to maybe some additional outreach and bringing it back, potentially for August 4th, I believe, is our special meeting on August 4th. I think that's maybe a more reasonable timeframe if that's the approach council wants to take.
So when did, and Councilmember Stewart mentioned it, when is the lift on the rent?
The rental moratorium?
Right.
The governor's rental moratorium?
August 1st, okay. Okay.
Oh, and I think, and Rita had mentioned today that there was some talk of the moratorium on rental increases, or rent being extended, much like other proclamations and moratoriums. Did you have something?
Yeah, we've heard an exhortee from the Association of Western Washington that the stay in the moratorium is likely to be extended, but nothing's set in stone at the moment.
Just to reiterate, it expires August 1st, but like many other issues, the governor is likely to extend it because of the circumstances we're in. But we'll have to see.
Okay, then I have Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, I don't support the amended amendment from Councilmember Ritchie. I feel like we're changing the process on Rita and Mike, who are assessing the reports, assessing Sammamish community needs. And so I think they need to make, follow their process that actually surfaced their needs that we're talking about tonight, and not focus on any particular organization, but if they're qualified to meet that need, then we will look further into those organizations. So I guess what I'm doing is put the need before the organization, let's not order a review of these selected organizations mentioned by Councilmember Stewart, but rather, let's have Mike and Rita follow the normal process, identify the needs from the reports, and who are the qualified nonprofits that can fulfill those needs, and then we'll look at those in that order. And Rita and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but is that the current process? And I don't want to create a deviation from what you're already doing, which I think is good work.
Yeah, I think we're just really looking to see which organizations. I mean, obviously, it's not an exhaustive list of all the nonprofits that provide for residents right now. So we've really kind of focused on a lot of the basic needs, domestic violence, you know, mental health. So it's not an exhaustive list of all the nonprofit providers, but yes, we have been kind of looking to see what they're seeing in terms of demand. And as Mike said, with quarter two reporting, we'll have a better comparison compared to last year to see exactly the data points as to whether their service units have increased.
Okay, we still have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Stewart.
So based on feedback, I guess what I'm confused about is that the reporting that we've been getting from Rita and Mike doesn't align with the, completely with the organizations that are in the agenda bill. So if we want to provide funding to the organizations that Rita and Mike have been reporting out on, I'm fine with that, but we didn't. We picked three, which is not the same as what they've been reporting out on. And so I, and again, we didn't have specifics in terms of what those needs were. We know that those needs are increasing, and again, we know that they're going to increase probably faster, not slower, given everything that's going on. So I'm a little bit confused, and maybe Mike or Rita, you can share with us and remind us what the list of organizations are that you've been providing updates on.
So if you look at the updates I've been providing, it's been both the food banks that serve Sammamish, the two of the rental assistance, no, three of the rental assistance organizations that serve Sammamish, Crisis Clinic, Hope Link, Issaquah Community Services, Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank. We also do the mental health perspective, and that's from, like, Friends of Youth, Youth Eastside Services, and Cross Path. We have domestic violence covered by LifeWire. We've also talked about, so you know, we really try to sort of look to all the basic needs for the community. I'm just going to quickly look through my actual updates. So we have not, this is not an exhaustive list. This is not covering every single organization that we fund because we have a plethora of them. So these are the ones that we're really looking at that we believe have seen a marked increase due to COVID, and that's why we're reporting on those. So, you know, obviously, it's beyond basic needs. We have domestic violence, we have mental wellness, as well as basic needs and mental assistance there as well.
Right, so could you, could you name those organizations off again for us?
Sure. So it's Hope Link, Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, LifeWire, let me see, Eastside Baby Corner, Issaquah Community Services, St. Vincent de Paul, Crisis Clinic, Washington Poison Control. We've talked about Friends of Youth, Cross Path, Youth Eastside Services. And then we've also looked at homeless organizations, and that would be the Sophia Way, and in particular, Friends of Youth. Let me think. Mike, can you add? I'm going to try and see if I can find, I think, my update very quickly. So I think that is pretty much it. I may have missed a few, and then we've talked about, like, foundation funding, et cetera, but I think that's pretty much the ones that we reported on.
So, yeah, I'm happy to make sure that we're providing funding. I just didn't, I went by kind of what, and I may not have completely cross-checked all of them, but I tried to go based on all of the organizations you were reporting on and the top, some of the top grant recipients from the Human Services Commission, knowing that they put a significant amount of research into who's providing the most benefits to our community, and also based on the information we received from the Human Services Commissioners in terms of what the community needs were. So again, I don't want to, I don't want to slow down us getting any funding out to the community. I want to accelerate that, if anything. I'm just not understanding how the three organizations we picked here necessarily aligned any better with the list of reporting that we've been getting than the list that I provided.
Okay, also, very quickly, Councilmember Stewart, looking behind this, we also covered seniors. We've talked about Eastside Friends of Seniors, and we've also talked about school districts, and in particular, their summer lunch programs.
Right, and I do know last time, last round of funding, we did provide funding for the Eastside Friends of Seniors. Now, we haven't provided any funding to the school districts, and that's an interesting add potentially there as well. And is that directly to the districts or is that to the school foundations that are providing that?
So it depends. So we have two of the school districts. So Issaquah School District, they work with Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank for actual food during summer, and then Lake Washington actually works with their foundation, specifically pantry packs. So they're different models, both systems.
Got it. So Rita, have you, or Mike, have you guys found for all of these organizations that you're reporting on, if I recall from last week, we're seeing an uptick from all of them, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's not an exhaustive list, but the ones that I reported on, yes, we've been able to, so bear in mind, like, you know, we're trying to, you know, engage with nonprofits, but also just very cognizant of their time as well. They are slammed, to say the least. So really trying to sort of find the evidence, also knowing that sometimes we don't have data points and it's more anecdotal, hence why quarter two reporting that we've got coming up tomorrow is really important, we have to see data points and any potential trends as such. And I think you could pretty much safely say, and I think, you know, like, that most organizations that we fund are going to be having an uptick in services, especially more the service, like, basic needs, seniors, mental wellness in particular.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I have no, I have no more questions, so Pam, please repeat your motion.
Yeah, I don't think it was ever under the motion, but I'd be happy to make that motion, that we provide, the money lost here. Any amount of $10,000 to De Paul's residential assistance, to the clothing bank for food delivery, $10,000 to Hope Link.
Can I make a friendly amendment to that, that before our meeting on, I guess it's August, that Rita and Mike get back to us with a breakdown of all the information you get back from the quarterlies on the different organizations, so that we can get some COVID money out to those organizations, and we can look at people served and, you know, how it's broken down, what's needed, that sort of thing.
Can we do that as a separate motion?
And, hold on, so that would be my amendment, but Mr. Sugg has a comment to that.
Maybe I was misunderstanding. I think that's the type of data that we were planning to bring back on August 4th for that conversation. So that's something we would be gathering and putting in your packet.
Would it be in the packet for the 4th?
That's what we'd be aiming for, yes.
Okay, all right. So that would be my, he's planning on having that in the packet, so that would be wonderful. Okay. So then I would second that. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment because there's no mental health or domestic abuse services covered in that. So I'd like to recommend that we add an additional $10,000 to the Friends of Youth, and $10,000 for Youth Eastside Services, as well as $10,000 for the Crisis Clinic, Crisis Line.
Mr. Sugg, do you know where, here you're giving me that look. Do you know where the majority of our residents go? I mean, I know, I sponsor the Women's House down in Redmond for shelter. Do you know where the majority of our residents would call or go to for help for domestic violence and stuff like that?
Councilmember Moran, I can jump in here. Is that okay?
Oh, there you are, Rita, I forgot you were on the line.
Yes.
Yes, there you go. So it would definitely be, there are a number of different domestic violence organizations in the area. For our residents, it would definitely be LifeWire, they're based on the east side, and that's the main domestic violence organization that people tend to go to.
What about for mental health issues?
Is that for youth or for families?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, you know, as you know, like, Friends of Youth are covering the south side, Youth Eastside Services is covering the north side. And so as far as an actual some very Sammamish-focused entity, it would be Cross Path, just because of the nature of its peer, it's local, and as you know, that, you know, council did provide additional funding at the RFP, so we have an additional council there now. So I think that, I mean, obviously, there are various private counselors, but I think it would be those three, and in particular, Cross Path.
Okay, so I'd like to modify my amendment, and that would be to provide $10,000 to, was it Cross Path? $10,000 to LifeWire? And what was the third one, Rita? I'm sorry.
So, yeah, so it's two of them, Friends of Youth, Youth Eastside Services, and Cross Path, and that's really being with youth, mental wellness, yeah.
Okay. So it would be $10,000 to LifeWire, $10,000 to Friends of Youth, and $10,000 to Youth Eastside Services.
So do we know, has there been an uptick with domestic violence? Do we have any stats on that?
What are we doing?
Excuse me, this is Dave. Regarding your question about an uptick in domestic violence, I was just talking with the chief the other day, and he said, fortunately, they have not.
It's just calls, that doesn't mean it's not happening. Motion and a second on the amendment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the amendment. We do not, do we have a motion? Yes, we do have a second.
So I just would like to clarify my motion, and that all of the information that is out there is that with people sheltering in place, the calls to the food are not necessarily increasing, but that does not mean that the crisis is not there and that people are not in need of help, they just aren't coming to. So there is an uptick in domestic violence, and it is one of the most under-reported issues that exist.
Okay, so who was my second on that?
Jason.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we're going to vote on the amendment.
I'm in the queue. No, I'm in the queue.
Okay, you're going to have to let me know because I am down to less than 5%. Okay. Councilmember Ritchie.
Cam, were you first? I don't know, man.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ritchie. All right, sorry. I just, what I'm trying to understand, guys, is what I'm, what my ask, my support of this amendment and my support of the motion eventually is, that we should be doing something, but it should be based on information or data. And all I'm asking is, how do we vote for something without knowing what it is? And can we direct staff to ask the questions and to get us data? If it's a phone call, it's a phone call. If it's an email, if it's a presentation, whatever it is. I don't think there's, there is a time sensitivity to these things, but it's urgent, but... is a time sensitivity to these things, but it's urgent, but I think we have to be process-oriented about it. And so the reason I'm seconding these things is to try to sort out exactly what our ask is, and does it have any process value, or are we just kind of going for it? Do these organizations need money? Do we have resources to give them? How do we know they have resources, that they need resources? How do we know how many people they're serving in our community? All I'm asking for is a way to have that information given to us in a process, in a way, in a format, whether it's August 6th, or next week, or whatever it is, on a semi-regular basis, so that we can keep in contact with these things, and to make sure that we're dealing with it on a step-by-step, keeping our finger on the pulse of what the need is. And I don't know if that's an ask of the staff, I don't know if it's something we should just throw money at right now, maybe there's a need, I don't know, I haven't seen it, I haven't heard it. So I'm asking.
It sounds like it's going to be in the early report, that will be in our packets, coming back in the first meeting in August.
Okay. Then let's, then we have a motion on the floor, there is an amendment, there's going to be new information coming out on August 6th. Thank you. That's what I need to know, that will help me make a more informed decision. I appreciate it.
Next is Councilmember Treen.
Yeah, the only thing I would mention to say was wondering, kind of like Jason there too, is that some of these organizations aren't open even for seeing people to provide services, at least at the times that I've been going by doing my walks. And so I'm just, you know, if it's all by phone and video, that's fantastic, but again, it's like, where's, where's the numbers? Where's the data? I don't see any.
Let's vote, because we've got to extend the meeting, too.
Okay, so Andrew is online, and Andrew has a comment for us, so bear with me while I have 3% of battery, and then followed by Councilmember Gamblum. Andrew, are you online?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to speak to Councilmember Ritchie's comment regarding where this funding coming, if you are directing staff, or they're coming back next week with some additional information, or in August. One thing to think about, too, is if it's CARES funds eligible. You know, to Councilmember Stewart's point, I do not believe domestic violence can be directly tied to COVID. It may be, you know, in reality, but due to the, you know, the guidance put out by the Treasury Department and Commerce, that doesn't seem to be one of those eligible expenses as well.
Yeah, so I'm in agreement with Councilmember Treen and Councilmember Ritchie. This should be a quantifiable decision, not based on just adding things in as we go along. Obviously, we want to help the community, we want to make sure that the dollars we're putting out there are CARE Act reimbursable, and I think the way to do that is to please instruct our staff to provide us with this detailed information on needs, what these individual organizations need, whether it's CARE Act reimbursable. So I would tend to vote, tend to support Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor's, the original motion. Sorry, I'm getting punchy.
Okay.
Move to extend.
We're going to extend the meeting till 10:30.
We've got a motion on the floor and amendment. I don't know if we can supersede it with that motion to extend.
We've done it before.
It's 10 o'clock.
Let's go down.
It's 10 o'clock, and we've got two motions. The first motion we have to do is we're going to have to extend the meeting. Do I hear a motion to extend?
I move to extend till 10:30.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. Now, back to the motion on the floor. Any other discussion?
Yeah, so I, I'm in queue there, Mayor. So I'm fine if we want to get more data. I just don't think that there's any more data for the dollar amounts and the organizations in the main motion than there are for the ones in the amendment. So I just, I feel like we should either fund these organizations and get more information on August 4th, or we wait till August 4th. But there's no, just to be clear, there is no additional information on the organizations and the dollar amounts in the main motions than there were in my original motion or in my amendment.
Okay, then let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
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 Okay, six to one. Back to the original motion, any more discussion? I have discussion. I'm going to say, the difference to me was the fact that we had the, we did have more discussion, we did have more numbers. We had the food banks that said, you know, exactly that they couldn't keep numbers of exactly how many people were coming in, but we had the number of people that came in from Sammamish that were asking for rent money, they had the numbers of that. They had the numbers of people that were coming in to Hope or to St. Vinnie's asking for rent money. They, we did have numbers. That told us there was a need. The whole thing was, let's get the money, we know they're going there. That made the difference for me. So let's get the money, we know people are going there, let's keep it funded, and let's get the information so we can get the other stuff funded, so we can keep these things funded. That's what the money's for. I'm not trying to withhold money from anybody, we've just got to get it there. Okay, so let's get this darn vote. Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I think we have a 7-0 vote. Yippee, all right.
I'd like to make another motion, and that is that we ask Rita and Mike to engage the Human Services Commission as well, to provide any input they may have, since I know that many of our Human Services Commissioners are out in the community and very involved. I think they would be able to provide some additional insight for August 4th.
Do they?
Second if that takes a motion.
Or can we just ask you guys to engage with the Human Services Commission, since that's what their job is, and we should be engaging them on this anyway?
I'll withdraw my motion.
I'm just looking at Mike, that's kind of what we do, so I think that's, we'll try. I think that's what he said.
Yeah, the.
That's kind of what they do.
My only concern is the, the meeting schedule that we have set up. Currently, the commission is undergoing the regular biennial Human Services Grant Review process, and they're actually on an accelerated schedule right now, meeting twice a month in order to get that recommendation to council in the fall. And, yeah, we just need to look at their meeting schedule. I'm not sure it will align with the council's meeting on August 4th, but we could see if maybe they'd be willing to do a special meeting to discuss some of this.
Mike, you could even just email them, right? I don't even know that it requires a prolonged meeting. I think we just need input from them.
Sure.
Okay. All right, let's move on. We should be further than this. Okay, guys, we have got one thing left. The next thing up is the business grant program. Mr. Sugg.
Good evening, Mike Sugg, Senior Management Analyst, once again. This agenda item is a continuation of the discussion from last week regarding a grant program to support small, local small businesses as they begin to reopen and expand operations. Last week, the council approved a motion which established a framework for the grant program. This included information, information such as funding levels and eligibility criteria. That motion also directed a number of changes to the application, which staff are bringing back for council's consideration tonight. The agenda bill for this item lists a number of changes made to the grant application in response to the council's feedback last week. Several questions were removed that were not necessary to ask. A few minor things were added, including a question the council approved that prohibited staff or councilmembers from applying for a grant. And one item was changed in response to council discussion regarding the threshold for women and minority-owned businesses, which is an optional question that we're asking to provide reporting back to King County. The day after, I just wanted to note, after the council meeting last week, a handful of staff participated in a call between cities and representatives from the Department of Commerce, as well as the State Auditor's Office, to discuss local business grant programs. The cities on the call were all looking for guidance on what should, what they should be requesting from grant applicants, and there was concern from the group because cities are using federal dollars for these grants. And as you know, federal audits are notoriously strict and complex, yet the State Auditor's Office hadn't developed any criteria for cities, and likely won't until after the deadline to spend CARES Act funding has passed in October. So without this formal guidance from the State Auditor's Office or Commerce, we really just have to use our best judgment in this, in this scenario. So we met with a handful of staff internally who have been through audits in the past and handled federal funds for other projects, and went through the application one by one, which resulted in some of the changes you see in the application tonight. And it appears currently that we would be collecting information that the city would need, should this program come under audit, based on the information that we have now. So as a next step, if the council is ready to move forward with the application, pending any additional changes resulting from this discussion tonight, staff will then begin developing the informational materials, including, you know, details for applicants who are interested in applying, the informational webpages and things like that. The timeline that we've included in the packet may be a little bit optimistic, but we would like to have the application posted in early to mid-August, once we've had a chance to thoroughly outreach to businesses in partnership with our communication staff. And with that introduction, I will go ahead and turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, so I'm looking at my queue, and I don't know who came on first with questions here. Okay, I'm seeing Pam wave her finger, so I'm going to assume that I'm going to start with Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so Mike, thank you once again, always exceptional work. I'd like to go ahead, since we're, as you was pointing out, Mayor, running behind, I'll just go ahead and make the motion, and I just want to propose one change. So I move that we move forward with this grant application, and with the basic timeline that Mike has provided, allowing staff to make any, pushing out any of the deadlines as needed to do the appropriate outreach. The one minor change I would request is that we add to the application process that businesses attach supporting documentation for their expenditures and their impacts. And I think that will hopefully cover us, if there were to be an audit, if we just ask them for documentation that would show that. So that would be my motion.
Jason, hold it back a little. Thank you. I just saw a wave. Okay, is there anybody else with comment? I'm not seeing anything come up in my queue, but that doesn't mean it's working.
You've got Kent.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, my, okay, so who is it? Because my queue's not working. Okay, Councilmember Treen, followed by Deputy Mayor, followed by Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, so I'm in support of this motion. I'll just, I'll let you know, the reason why I said no last time was because, you know, again, we're just starting to spend money. So I just want you to all be aware, though, on the council, you know, we're spending money, and, and people need it, and businesses and residents, and just be aware that we are spending money. And, you know, the coffers, at some point, you know, we've got a budget coming up, too. So just remind yourselves, that's what we're doing.
I up?
Okay, next I have got, if you're done, Councilmember Treen, then next up I have got Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So just, yes, we're spending money, but we're also spending CARES Act dollars, so that does help. It's not a direct impact to our budget specifically. But I did have a question, and it could potentially turn into an amendment, and it was a question I was going to ask before the motion was made, which is, we all received an email from a local nonprofit asking about this, and I'm wondering if that would be an appropriate add-in here, with the same criteria that a business would have to. So I don't know, that may be a question for staff, whether that's even appropriate under this, because some of them are operating, obviously, as a business, but are providing it without profit to themselves. So I don't know if staff can answer that question, or if I need to make it a formal amendment. I'm not sure I want to until I know the answer.
Okay, hang on, I think he's, hold on, I'm going to let you, okay, I'm going to have you ask him that question again.
Who am I asking the question to?
Mr. Sugg.
Okay. So I was just wondering about the appropriateness of adding nonprofits that are located in Sammamish. I think we would use the same guidelines that the businesses, like, they, you know, they're established state, you know, providing that they had impacts from COVID, all that stuff. Would that be appropriate with this? I mean, is that reimbursable? That's another question, right? Can they get, is that reimbursable with CARES Act funding or not?
Yeah, I think the, the question about whether it's reimbursable is something we'd have to look into. Oh, it sounds like Andrew Stevens is on the line and has a comment.
Andrew?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, one of the things, speaking, I guess we can talk to Deputy Mayor's comment first. That should be reimbursable. Nonprofits is definitely a pool, something you're already doing, by providing assistance to the food banks and things like that. Having similar criteria, as far as, I think you would just have to revise the language, as far as, you know, because nonprofits do have different reporting mechanisms to show how they're spending their money. They have kind of report cards on where that money's going. I don't think it would be beneficial at the time to, like, create seed money for new nonprofits or new businesses for this. It would really be to support things that are, have been, and are working to support Sammamish residents at this time, whether that's this pool of money, or a separate one directly for nonprofits. I think, you know, Mr. Sugg came to the table with businesses in mind, we've done a lot of homework, talked to Aaron about that, what financial documentation should be provided, what, we don't want to probably ask for more, because that one puts a greater burden on small business owners who are already struggling. But they did revise with the recommendations, which is what you see in front of you, as far as what would kind of protect the city if it was audited.
Okay. I think I probably won't make an amendment. I think it might be worthy, but it might be worthy to do it later. I don't want to delay the businesses getting their funding any sooner than, so, and I'm afraid that we'd sit here for an hour trying to figure out what we needed to do for a nonprofit, so that may be a later iteration of this.
And I will.
And I think there's definitely ways later on that we can work around some of the CARES Act restrictions as well. We are not in a place where I don't think we're at any risk of giving money back to the federal government or leaving it unspent at this juncture.
Okay. Thank you.
And I was just going to jump in really quickly.
Mr. Sugg?
Thank you, Mayor, not to beat a dead horse, but looking at other applications that cities put out, a good number of them that I noticed were asking, are you a nonprofit?
I think we lost the mayor.
Okay, go to Ross, go.
Okay, yeah, I just think, I'm, I'm not against the motion, but I'm kind of trying to understand, get my head around, you said receipts for impact, but impacts aren't receivable entirely. In fact, probably most often aren't.
I didn't say receipts, just documentation.
What's that?
I didn't say receipts, just documentation.
Documentation?
They can just prove it. They can just show it, anyway they can.
Uh, like, if you have a decline in revenue, a quarterly revenue statement, or something of that nature. You said, you said on documentation.
Just, just something on there.
I agree with you correctly. Thanks for clarification.
Sorry, Councilmember Ross, I'm sorry to cut in. This is Andrew Stevens again. CARES Act specifically disallows any sort of subplanting of revenue loss. So if you're asking people to show that, that would automatically be a red flag for any audit.
And I'm going to jump on right behind Andrew here. We've had discussions with Department of Commerce. We've had discussions with the State Auditor. We have to be very careful about getting to look like any, that we're dealing with subs, what's it, subrecipient-type grants. So we don't want to be asking for how they spent the money, and we have to be very careful about what documentation we ask for. So I'm going to recommend that you stick to the agenda tonight with the application that you have. I think we vetted it pretty well, and then we can come back and talk about some of the nonprofits, and try not to mix these, because there could be a little bit different ask as far as documentation. But it, this issue of the documentation and, and how we move forward is not as clear-cut on the surface as what it's turning out to be. So we just need to be very careful, so that we anticipate how tough a single audit by the federal government could end up being. That's what everyone's cautioning, and other city managers asking very similar questions about how to stay in the safe zone. So thank you.
Okay.
I don't think, okay.
Councilmember Gamblin, followed by Councilmember, let's see, Stewart.
So my comment was going to be very similar to what the city manager said. I think this, the way this has been submitted to us by the city manager's office has been pretty well-vetted, and I really hesitate to make changes to this arbitrarily, because, again, we don't know what's going to come out on, audit on this, and we don't want to hand out a whole bunch of money that we end up not being able to get back from the CARES Act. So I would say we want to stay within these parameters, so I would not support the motion as it's, as it's been given.
So my question is, if we don't ask for any documentation on, on being able to show the financial impact, or what they spent it on, it feels like that fails an audit as well, because those are requirements of the CARES Act funding. Is that a business has to have a demonstratable impact and, and expenditures due to COVID? So I'd just like to understand how not requiring any documentation doesn't get us to fail an audit.
I'll, I'll speak directly to that. It's because the State Auditor's Department and the State Department of Commerce is cautioning us...
I'm sorry, Dave, you're cutting in and out. We can't hear you.
The State Department of Commerce and Auditor's Office is cautioning us...
Am I the only one that I don't hear him?
No, he's cutting out.
He's cutting out.
Aaron, are you still on the line?
I think we lost.
Yeah, no, I'm here.
We can't hear you guys.
My computer's dead. I'm here.
I can hear Pam.
Ken's still there.
Okay. I'm on her mic now.
Chris, can I ask you a question while they're buzzing around here?
Sure.
Is this mic making a difference?
I guess I don't understand, maybe I just misunderstood what the city manager was saying about the need for documentation. It sounded like he was saying that there is no state auditor's need or statement or direction that we're seeking documentation, but the CARES Act clearly calls for that, right?
No, it doesn't.
They clearly call for a demonstratable impact and expenditures due to COVID.
So how do we prove that? I mean, the word documentation is broad, right?
That's why I'm asking for documentation, right? Like, show me that you spent $1,000 on masks and call it a document.
Don't we have to prove, more to the council's point? Isn't that, if we see you need some demonstrative documentation, but we don't necessarily know what that is yet? Isn't that the applicant's responsibility to demonstrate what that is? But nonprofits can have a different need than a for-profits. Every business, whether it's a quarterly reporting statement, whatever it is, they have to produce some documentation.
Can anybody hear me?
I have to cut you off, but I don't, Ken is the only person I can see that's at City Hall.
Chris, can you hear me?
Ken, can you hear us?
Chris?
Nope. Okay, they've lost audio then.
So I think Pam raised a good point, but we can, but the point I think we're hearing from Dave is, we don't know exactly what the documentation, we can't advise. So maybe we should put an asterisk on the application that document, you may, documentation may be followed up, required before disbursement of funds.
That's a great idea.
On request.
Okay.
That, just put an asterisk, and then we'll pull up and learn more by that time of what we need.
That, that may be, I, I'm happy when they come back, we can modify the, the motion if that makes more sense. I, I think we're going to have to get documentation.
Counsel.
There's no way the federal government is not going to require it. I think it's just that nobody knows what it is.
Yeah, they just don't know what it is yet that they require.
So the asterisk should solve that problem.
Can you, something in their chat?
So we move forward with what we have, knowing we're going to have to make an amendment as we go forward, right?
Well, we'll move forward with what we have, modifying the application that says people need to be prepared to provide documentation demonstrating the, the impact and expenditures, the COVID-related impacts and expenditures. And we'll leave it at that.
As soon as we know from...
My tag is over in the chat box, just for everyone's knowledge.
Okay, so we're going to shut the meeting down?
Please enter your access code by the pound or hash sign. Please re-enter your access code, followed by the pound or hash sign. You entered no digits. Please re-enter your access code, followed by the pound or hash sign. We aren't receiving your number entry due to a possible issue with your phone carrier. Please hang up and dial another provided phone number, or try dialing from another phone. You can also visit link.gotomeeting.com/contact for support. Code six. Goodbye.
Um, yeah, let's try it. It's not even giving me that option. I'm not even getting the option. Yeah, it's just microspeakers or telephone.
Please enter your access code, followed by the pound...
Anybody hear me? Yeah, Mike, I usually...
To enable audio controls, please enter your audio PIN, followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not have a PIN, just press pound or hash.
No.
On this and wrap things up?
I don't know. Here, let me, let me check out something in the chat.
Do you hear me?
Oh, there we go.
Hey! Okay, you guys, let's do this really quick.
Okay, well, let us fill you in. Could you hear what we were saying?
Uh, we heard part of it.
Okay, so what we're going to do, I think Pam's going to rephrase her motion with an asterisk, so that...
Okay, let's do it quickly. Pam, rephrase your motion?
My, my motion is that we will move forward with the application as is, adding a comment that proof of, of impact or demonstratable impact and expenditures, COVID-related expenditures may be required at a later date.
Um, that's indicated that...
Yep.
Mayor, members of council, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm going to advise you, again, I, I think what you're asking for, Pam, is, sounds logical, but the State Auditor's Office has advised us against that. And the reason is, is it starts to look like subrecipient grants. You're going back and you're looking for performance after the fact. What we're doing is providing an indication that they've been, or asking them to provide an indication that they've been affected by COVID, and then to attest to that. And that, that seems to be what other agencies are doing, the State Auditor, State Department of Commerce. As Mike cautioned you in the beginning, they were not going to come out with our guidelines until this is all done, so we have to be very cautious about it.
Okay, then I move we accept the application as is.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Okay, raise hands, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
That's a seven zero. Excellent. Okay, so the next thing we have got is reports, and I see Councilmember Stewart has hers, Councilmember Trean, please read those, okay? Next, we have got executive session. So the first thing we're going to have to do is extend. I'm going to assume up to 40 minutes, so I need a motion to extend till 11:10.
So moved.
I move to extend to 11:15.
Okay, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and, okay, so executive session, potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I, and potential land acquisition pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101B. And we will catch you on the other side, and hopefully we will connect back up. Okay. Hi, counsel.
We were just going to be efficient. We were just going to get it done.
I'm guessing. We've got three, okay, we got four. Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, there we go, we got four.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
He's almost there.
We got everybody.
Doesn't, we can do four? Oh, okay, got a quorum. Okay, all those in favor.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.